Good evening, we're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting is in properly notice and post in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communications can view this program in high definition on Channel 1002. You can also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire TV on the Go Vegas app. The Planning Commission meeting as well as all other KCLV programming can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV in the web the Saturday of the meeting at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Cherry.
President.
Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Rousch.
I am here.
And Commissioner Williams is excused. Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and appeal and review process if appropriate. For the public, just so you know, there's agendas on both sides of the pony wall right here that you can pick up and view. Please read this carefully. If you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion as well as the amount of any time of time any single speakers allowed may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing no one, we move on to item number five. For possible action, to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of January 8, 2019. Vice Chair DeSalvio?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 8, 2019 minutes, please.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
January 8, 2019.
That motion carries. Moving on to our housekeeping items, are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be pulling item number nine off the consent items.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have some housekeeping items. The applicants are requesting to withdraw without prejudice items 13 through 16 and item 19. The applicants are requesting to obey items 22 through 25 to the March 12, 2019 Planning Commission. This is a second abeyance request for items 22 to 24 and the first abeyance request for item 25. The applicant is requesting to obey items 26 and 27 to the April 9, 2019 Planning Commission. This is a second abeyance request for these items. The applicant is requesting to obey items 46 through 187 to the March 12, 2019 Planning Commissions. This is the first abeyance request for these items. And the applicant is requesting to obey item 196 to the February 26, 2019 Planning Commission. This is the first abeyance request for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here for item number nine?
They're not.
They're not here. Commissioner Quinn, I believe, was it to hold the item?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it is to hold it for one month so that the Commissioner of the Ward has an opportunity to meet with the applicant.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak on these items? Okay, hearing no one. Vice Chair DeSalvio, can we get a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to... Do you want me to read each one with the... I'll just rip through the item numbers. Want the item?
Indicate that you're approving them as read.
Okay, so let's start with item number nine, to be held for 30 days to March 12th. Item number 13, ZON 75843, to be withdrawn without prejudice. Item number 14, VAR 74854, to be held without prejudice.
Commissioner? You can just go ahead and say you just approved them as to the withdrawals and abeyances. You don't have to read them all.
Okay, so then we'll say item number 15, without prejudice, correct? And number 16, without prejudice. Number 19, without prejudice. Number 22, obeyed till March 22nd. Item 23, obeyed till March 12th, excuse me, March 12th on both 22 and 23. Obeyed item number 24 to March 12th. Obeyed March 12th. Item number 25, obeyed to April 9th. Item 26, obeyed to April 9th. Item 27. And item number 46 through 87 will be held... 46 through 187 will be held 30 days till March 12th. Motion to approve.
196.
And 196?
Until February 26th.
Until February 26th?
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Okay, and that motion carries. Moving on to our consent items on the agenda, I will disclose I will be abstaining from items 10, 11, and 12. Have an interest with the company that's been involved in this project for many years. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission, may be enacted by one motion. However, any items may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. We'll note that item number nine has been held in abeyance. And then Commissioner DeSalvio, if I can get a motion from you.
Yes, motion to approve item number 7, 8, 10, 11, and 12 on the consent items.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, I was trying to get my word in edgewise that I own property near the applicant for number... Was it the same items that you abstained from? Was it 10 and 11?
And 12.
And 12. But I don't feel that it will affect my property value in one way or another, so I will be voting on the item. Thank you.
Thank you for the disclosure. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing items of the agenda. Item number 17, abeyance GPA 75109, applicant North Point Development, owner Omni Family LP, for possible action, request for a general plan amendment from DR to SC at the southeast corner of Buckskin Avenue and Rainbow Boulevard, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Related item number 18, abeyance ZON 75110, for possible action, request for a rezoning from RE to C1. Staff recommends denial. Related item number 20, noting that 19 has been withdrawn without prejudice. Item number 20, abeyance SUP 75112 for possible action, request for a special use permit for proposed mini storage facility use. Ward 5, staff recommends denial. And finally, item number 21, abeyance SDR 75114 for possible action, request for site development plan review for a proposed three-story, 140,988 square foot, 914-unit mini storage facility with a waiver to not orient the building to the corner where such is required. Ward 4, staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a general plan amendment from desert rural density residential to service commercial and a rezoning from residence estates to limit commercial. The subject parcel is surrounded by single-family detached dwellings and is not adjacent to any commercial land use. The applicant is also requesting a special use permit and site development plan review for a proposed 139,200 square foot mini storage facility with a waiver to not orient the building to the corner where such is required. Because the proposed commercial use in mini storage facility would create an island of commercial activity within a fully developed residential neighborhood, staff recommends denial of all associated applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. My name is Tony Sless, address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, North Point Development. First, if I can orient you to the overhead and just give you a quick background of the location of the site. It's approximately three acres located on Rainbow, which is to the west. You have Cheyenne to the south. This is US 95, a little bit farther to the west, Buckskin to our north, and then Atwood would be just to the south. And then this is the 300 acres that is the subject of tonight's application. What we have before you is a GPA request and a zone change to go to C1 with a special use permit to allow a mini storage facility and then a waiver with respect to the orientation of our building. We had a couple of neighborhood meetings, two to be exact. First one in December and then a follow-up one on January 28th. We held the second one so we could go back and implement many of the neighbors' suggestions or answer their questions, and I believe we were able to do that. So I'm going to go through a bit of a slideshow, if you will, to kind of show you a combination of where we started, where we ended up, and then some of the key questions or concerns that the neighbors asked us about and what we are doing or how we're responding to some of those. So first, as I indicated, we had a meeting on January 28th, a second neighborhood meeting on January 28th of 2019. And one of the biggest overriding issue was essentially the height of the building and the mass, the size of the building. So what we originally were proposing was a three-story, 35-foot-tall building, as you can see right here on the right side. That, like I said, was the biggest concern for the neighbors. We came back and showed them and have submitted to your planning staff a revision where the building is now two stories and predominantly 23 to 25 feet in height, although we do have some architectural elements at the front of the building along Rainbow that will go up to 29 feet. In order to make up for that third level that we cut off the top, we were actually going subterranean, so we do have one level or basement now below grade. So we have a basement and now two levels above grade predominantly, like I said, 23 to 25 feet. And as you will note in your, when you approve the agenda, item 19 was a variance request with respect to a setback, a three-to-one ratio. We withdrew that because we now meet that request, and as I will show you in a few slides later, that actually on the perimeter of our site adjacent to residential, it is now one story and 14 feet, and then we step it back to the two stories and 23 feet. So I'll show you that in a few slides here. But that was really one of the biggest fundamental changes that we made to the building. Again, you can see kind of the before and after with what we've done with respect to the height and the proposed elevations. Here is why we no longer need the variance request with respect to the setback. You can see we're proposing a one-story that is adjacent to all residential, approximately 14 feet, and then we step it back to about 23 to 25 feet for that second level above Again, this is, we superimposed the building as you're driving down Rainbow there. You can see, driving north right here where it'd be, and then driving south where the location would be. We've really tried to shrink it to 25 feet so that it now blends in better with the neighborhood and is not substantially taller than any other structure in the area. One of the also requests that was made is that because we do have secondary fire access on Buckskin, if we could somehow limit that, we do need to have that fire access, that fire lane back there. But what we'd like to do and what we are proposing and I've submitted a proposed condition to planning under the SDR is to have a provision that we are required to work with Public Works and the Fire Department on the location of a crash gate for emergency access only. That way, it'll help continue to funnel traffic on Rainbow, which is, you know, 120-foot right-of-way there, and eliminate or drastically reduce any of the traffic going down Buckskin, heading east towards the residential. So that is a proposed condition that we have sent to planning that we'd like to incorporate into this. One of the other things that always comes up is with respect to traffic and traffic counts. And what this shows you is, again, we are near a lot of residential. They are zone RPD 3 to R1, and you can see right here the traffic counts for RPD 3 and R1 are anywhere from six daytime trips to eight nighttime trips. R1, 10 day trips or 13 evening trips. And you can see right here self-storage, not drastically that much. It's 14 during the day, 24 in the evening. What I use this chart to show is that you can see the extreme on a commercial use, not the suggest that a convenience store or drive-through is inappropriate at this location. But to give everyone the sense of on the spectrum what those type of traffic counts are, you can see, you know, 500. We are on the spectrum of traffic counts in the residential area. So that was very important to the neighbors with respect to traffic and what traffic uses or traffic demands would be. Mini storage, we contend, is the least intense commercial-type use you can have, and I think these traffic numbers bear a lot of that, showing that this is a very low impactful, low intense use in the area. Again, this is just the condition of the site today. You can see there's unimprovements that we'd be responsible for. Obviously, we would clean it up and really rehab this particular area and make Rainbow going north of Cheyenne there all connected and unified with respect to our improvements. And this is the one gap that needs to be fixed, and we, as the developers, would be responsible to fix that. One of the waivers is with respect to the building orientation. As I indicated, we are not, we are requesting not to have the building oriented toward the corner there. And one of the reasons we believe that it won't work is because you will see on our site plan the location of our driveways. We have two of them right here so that you can have adequate queuing through the site and circulation, that if we start shifting the driveways, then what's going to happen is we are going to not be able to meet the distance separation between the intersection and the driveway. So we figure that this was, the driveway location was important, more important than the building orientation, and that's why you see that waiver. But understanding why the city wants to do that, to make the focal point of the buildings on the streetscape, what we're proposing in the alternative is basically a pedestrian-type plaza here as the main kind of focal point for that corner. So we wanted to, you know, adhere to at least the city's intent with respect to beautification of an area. You want to see nice streetscape driving down Rainbow. We think that this at least is a good-faith attempt to make, to do that in lieu of having the building on the corner. So that is something that was important in our design that we wanted to offer to the city, you know, with respect to the waiver and where we're positioning our building on the site. Again, there was some questions with, that was with respect to some of the design, some of the questions that the neighbors had that we were able to, you know, I think, answer at the second neighborhood meeting. The first one was with respect to home values. So we did a little research and found that within a newly constructed mini storage, within three years, homes surrounding it did not have a negative impact on their home values. In fact, if anything, it had a slight increase to their value. So we can come up here and say that there would be, you know, no negative impact with respect to their home values by adding this type of use to the area. Again, we worked with the city with respect to our driveway alignments. That was something important to the neighborhood. One of the other things you'll notice, a comment in the staff report with respect to other mini storages that are located within a mile or two of the site. We went out and did our own market study, and we found that essentially everything within a few miles of our site is at 90% or above capacity. So this area, there is a need for it. We're not oversaturating the market. This shows, you know, what that, what the need is out there. And one other thing I really would like to highlight here, you can see in this bottom left-corner picture. So we have a, basically a portico sheer where you drive in. I haven't seen this in Las Vegas. They are based out of the upper Midwest where right now temperatures are minus 25 degrees. So this is all internal units. There are no outside units, no doors stacked, no doors facing the right-of-way. Everything's accessed internally. So in order to be protected from the elements, and especially here in Las Vegas, more appropriate during the summertime when it's 115 degrees, you pull into this shaded area, protected area. This is where you can do your unloading and bring your items to your unit internally, up the elevator or down the elevator, since we do have a basement. So this, to me, is a very cool feature, something very unique that North Point offers, and I just really wanted to highlight that because I think it's a really neat feature that they're providing. There was questions about demographics that we look at. Essentially, everyone uses this. There's, it's a wide spectrum of people that use it, so we just wanted to show everyone that everyone needs a mini storage. There was a question with respect to operating hours. It's generally business hours, office hours, Monday through Friday, 9 to 6. We have office hours on Saturday, a little bit limited, 9 to 5, Sunday, 11 to 4. If you do have a unit, you do have general access with your key fob to get into your unit, basically 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And there is no nighttime manager that stays, no one lives on site. That was another thing, clarification that we made with the neighborhood. Again, there was, with respect to our zoning, you can see right here is really the, a lot of the commercial hub along the 95, Cheyenne, Rainbow. We're about 400 feet just north of it. So while, yes, we are asking to go from RE to C1, there is C1 along Rainbow. Rainbow is 100 to 125-foot right-of-way. I do know, obviously, there are homes on the west side, cul-de-sac units that are there. But quite frankly, today, you would not see a residential use to be developed on this parcel with the way Rainbow is now developed out, you know, 30, 40, 50 years ago from when those, some of those homes were first built, when, you know, Rainbow was essentially a two-lane road each way. It is now a major thoroughfare, a major arterial. And the size of the lot, being an infill parcel, just does not make it all that conducive anymore for residential. So while, yes, we're going to C1, we are going to the least intense use we believe that you could ask for in any type of C1 with a mini storage facility, does not produce traffic, very quiet use, limited hours of operation. So that's why we think it's actually a good fit, a good transition for this area. And then finally, like I said, we had a couple of neighborhood meetings. So what this map shows, first of all, is highlighted in orange are individuals that attended the first neighborhood but not the second neighborhood meeting. The ones highlighted in yellow attended both neighborhood meetings. I think it would be fair to say that we did incorporate a lot of their suggestions, did answer a lot of their questions. They did not come out and say they were for the project. They didn't tell us they were against it either, but that's just with respect to the yellow. And then finally, this cul-de-sac right here, we do have a letter in support that I would like to submit to the clerk, basically saying that they are in support of this application. Again, I know there's one or two neighbors here, so I will defer my time to them, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Thank you very much. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item, please come forward. I'll need your name and address for the record, if you're for or against, and why.
I oppose it. My name's Bruce Hamburg, and I am for the Family Bond Trust on 6680 Atwood, 6687 Atwood, one parcel on Atwood and one on Willow River. And we oppose that. That would put that fire lane right in our backyard. And as you can see, the graffiti on the wall, we have a lot of homeless problems there that would give them a place to hide behind the building, do whatever they do, hop over the wall, burglarize my house. And we oppose it. We like to see something going in that lot. We like to be a residential. We do not want it commercial, please.
Thank you.
And that, we pay a lot of taxes on that. I have the house across the street, and we try to keep that rural neighborhood. That's why we have it. I had it for over 35 years there, that property. I want to keep it that way. And when Curly had that property there, you know, I should have bought it from him. I don't want it going commercial. I want it to stay residential. They could build houses there, but that would just give them somewhere to hide in that fire lane to do whatever they do. I have cameras back there, and it would set them off all the time for motion detection camera. Don't do nothing, just tell you, yeah, somebody spray painted the wall or something. You can't see their faces, and that would just add to the crime, give them a place to hide.
Thank you for your comments, Bruce.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard? We do have three microphones. If anyone else would like to come up, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Christina Robertson, R-O-B-E-R-T-S-O-N. Christina, C-H, R-A-S-T-I-N-A. I live at 6741 Rocking Horse Avenue. Our property is one street away. Our backyard is connected to the backyard of someone facing the storage unit. We did attend the first meeting that the developer brought out, but I didn't know about a second meeting. In fact, I didn't get a postcard or anything about this meeting. I just remembered from when it was posted that they would postpone it till now, so I don't know why I didn't receive something to say that this was going on. My husband and I oppose this because we don't want more traffic. We don't want our property value to go down. It's right up the street from a school, and we already have quite a bit of traffic right there. Anytime in and out of our street is already difficult because our street literally ends and opens up right at Rainbow. So we have a problem with already the traffic on Rainbow, and we know this will add to it. The children, there's a crossing guard on every corner because of how much activity that's right there. And so I'm concerned for the children. I also have a concern about crime or homelessness or drug use or anything like that that would happen because of a storage facility. I appreciate that North Point took into account some of our suggestions. I see that they did make an effort, but I would like it to stay desert rural residential. I hope that you'll consider... I don't know how we could appeal to someone to put homes there, or I think there was a point that they were going to have a convalescent type of a home there, and I think that would even be easier than this. But we certainly just don't want it to go commercial. We were hoping it would stay residential, desert rural. That's why we bought the property. We've been there now 19 years, and we're just hoping that you'll consider to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Anyone else like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will have the applicant come back up, and I'll give them a minute if they'd like to rebuttal.
Just two quick points. One, with respect to the fire lane, we are, again, asking an additional condition to restrict access back there, so it'd be only for emergency only that would be back there. So we don't want, don't intend it to be a major, any type of drive back there except for essentially fire or emergency vehicle only. Number two, development of this property would get rid of the graffiti and a lot of the other issues on it. So it's generally, I appreciate the neighbors recognizing we did incorporate suggestions and answer all their questions.
Thank you. I will turn it over to the commission, and I will quickly start off by saying, when I first saw the project and the three-story, it definitely was a no-go for me, and based on the changes that have happened, and I understand, you know, Rainbow's difficult. It'd be difficult to come in with homes there, and it's almost like an infill project after everything's built. Based on its intensity and based on everything I'm seeing, I feel like I can support this. I'd certainly want to hear from the other commissioners, but I know that condition would definitely have to be on there with fire, having some type of crash gates in the back section of it. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sless, what are the hours of operation of the storage unit?
The hours are, so office hours are Monday through
The hours are, so office hours are Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Sunday, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
So it's your, it's your, it's your suggestion that people wouldn't be coming in the units after hours when no one's in the office?
And then, I was going to finish that, then general access for those that have, that have units, have a key fob, they would have larger times to access, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM would be those. If you, so business hours, if you're looking to go look at a unit or need to do business or whatever, be with a manager.
What I'm concerned about is when no one's in the office and people are coming in and out of there after the office is closed.
So, yeah, so again, it's, access is only between 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We do have security there to monitor things, of course, emergency call boxes, things like that. And then between 10:00 PM to the following morning of 6:00 AM, there is, there is no access. The key fobs don't work at that time.
Okay. And then, is, just a thought, I mean, if I was living behind this in the storage units, I would, would like a security on the property maybe 24 hours. As I know friends that own one on Vegas and Rancho, and if they're not in the office, no one can utilize the storage units unless they let them in and out. So they're like, you know, these hours, but then that's it, game over.
Right.
So I just wanted to throw that at you.
Okay.
Because I think it's important to protect the neighborhood, and I think it's important that this corner doesn't sit empty, and I don't see residential going there. But also, one other thing, the lighting of the, could we talk about that a bit? Because I've learned, could we talk about the lighting, please?
Absolutely. So, I'm glad you brought that up, and I failed to mention that. So, one, there is city code requirements that we're going to have to meet with respect to lighting. Essentially, what that code requirement is, is a nutshell, that it has to be downcast, shielded lighting, prevent overflow or light pollution to adjoining properties. Number two, with respect to our design, which I think is actually beneficial to us, as you can see right here, if I may just direct your attention back to the overhead, you can see right here, this is Rainbow located here. This is the front of the building, so parking lot, pedestrian, everything like that is oriented towards Rainbow, which is already 100 to 125, 100 to 120-foot right of way with street lights on it. So any parking lots, floodlights, security-type lights are all going to be on the Rainbow frontage side. So the building in of itself actually helps protect and shield additional lighting from going farther east into the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Rauch?
Thank you, Chairman Cherry. My concern is that I feel that this is like a quasi-industrial use. This is a monolithic, large building that is basically an industrial building in what amounts to a low rural, low-intensity rural residential neighborhood. I'm looking at the cul-de-sac behind the property. There's four lots in this cul-de-sac, I don't know what size they are, I can't tell quite from this map, but these are large lots. These look like 18,000-square-foot lots or something like that. We're taking a neighborhood that is largely rural residential and plopping a two-story industrial building down in the middle of it. It's, from my point of view, completely illogical and incompatible and not harmonious with the neighborhood at all. I realize they're serviced commercial to the south, but that's at a much larger cross-street location. Rainbow is a special street, and I get that there are needs for commercial development up and down the street, especially, I think, later on in the, in the agenda, there's an application for something like this when it comes up off of an intersection, but this is too far north from the intersection, to my thinking. This is too deep into the neighborhood for what should be happening in this level of density. It's just too intensive a use. There's a reason why industrial uses are not compatible with neighborhoods. There's a reason why industrial is the highest intensity use in the zoning code and residential's the lowest intensity use. So, from my point of view, even though you made it a lot prettier, a lot more attractive, and part of it subterranean, I share Commissioner Quinn's concerns about timing, people coming and going from the property with unmanned security. Security's good, but lighting is a concern, and then just the monolithic look of the building up and down the street, I think, is really not an attractive use, and I don't think it's what the neighbors in the area had originally signed up for. So unfortunately, I will not be supporting this tonight. I think there are other uses that could go on this site. I would add that, before people think that we just have to do this because residences or residential isn't going to go on the site, there are a lot of other uses that could happen here. You can have low-intensity office, single-story office, single-user office. You could have a veterinarian clinic, which almost borders on retail. There's all kinds of things you could put on this site. It doesn't have to be an industrial two-story mini storage, and it's an awful lot of square footage, and it's an awful lot of units, so I just, I think it's an incompatible use. I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rauch. Commissioner Toussaint?
This is on Rainbow, and I don't see any homes being built. I don't think it's compatible for residential. I think the building is beautiful. I think what you've done is marvelous. I mean, you've taken the homeless concerns, and I understand that there are some people concerned about homeless being back in there, but I think if you put a storage unit like this in there and you have security there, I don't think you're going to have a homeless problem. I think you have a homeless problem now because there's nothing there. I think that once this is built and you have your security there and you have your lighting, I don't think that homeless is going to be a problem. So you'll have my support on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toussaint. Commissioner Savio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I commend you, it's not my award, but I do commend you for working with the owner and the neighborhood to take it from where it was to where it is now. To me, I think it is harmonious and compatible, because it is very, I don't know if anybody lives around a storage unit, I happen to, and it's very far and few between before you see anybody coming in and going in that. I mean, to me, it would be the most less intrusive use on a C1 than, say, you know, having a guy with a drive-thru, you know, Chick-fil-A or something on the corner, I don't know, but I'm just, I think it would be the most less intrusive use. I think it's a beautiful building. I love the idea of putting a little park area off the corner right there to kind of make it feel like a neighborhood fitting. I think the work that's went into it is great. I think it would fix the homeless issue. I love the idea of all the 24-inch box trees that separates the fire lane from the backing up to the closest residents. I stand in support, just because of what went through. You took the information from the neighbors, came back with a new design, you stepped it, you went subterranean. I like the idea that it's got a port of cachet where people pull in, so it's not intrusive to the public driving by or going around that neighborhood, seeing people unload all their stuff. I like that conceptual idea, to be honest with you. I stand in support of it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion on the item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 17, GPA 75109.
It's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. That motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 18, ZON 75110.
It's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. That motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 20, SUP 75112.
It's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
Okay, and I'd like to make a motion to approve SDR 75114 with the condition of a crash gate for the fire, to try to keep it less intrusive on the neighbors.
Yes, and we drafted some proposed language out of the city.
Through you, Chairman, I would recommend a condition that adds, the applicant will coordinate with city traffic engineer to install gates that limit general access along north and west access points of the fire lane.
And agree to that.
Okay, and I was also wondering if it's possible to put a condition for hours of operation, just to try to fit in with the neighborhood even more.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, so hours of operation should have gone on the SUP. However, these items will be going forward to city council, so if it's the will of the planning commission, we will communicate to, as part of our presentation, that there was a request to look at limiting the hours as a part of the SUP consideration, instead of reopening that item since you've already voted, if that's what you want to do.
We, yes, we understand that, thank you.
Do we know, sorry, do we know the limited hours that you're, what it's recommend?
I'm thinking like nine to six, so it's not so intrusive. I had one, you want it to be when people are in the office?
And then the general access distinguished that from the office from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM is what I had stated in my presentation.
I see 10's pretty late for neighborhood, you know, that's why nine to six, I think, would be sufficient enough.
6:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
It's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is a motion on the floor for item number 21 with the added condition about the crash lane? Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 6th.
Chairman Cherry, I apologize. I'd like to have the clerk review my vote on number 17. I think I pressed the wrong button. My intention was to vote no, and I may have pressed yes, so I'd like the record to reflect that I meant to vote no on item number 17. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to item number 28. ZON 75317, applicant owner Suchitra Reddy Yaragili. I apologize if I messed that up. For possible action, request for planning rezoning from R1 to PO at 610 South 8th Street, Ward 3, staff recommends approval. And item number 29, related item number 29, SDR 75316, proposed motion and request for site development plan and review for the proposed conversion of a single-family residence to an 808-square-foot office with an 80-square-foot storage building with waivers of Title 19.08 Development Standards and Title 19.12 Parking Standards, Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to convert an existing single-family dwelling into a proposed one-story office building with a storage shed. The site is located within the downtown Las Vegas overlay district within the Founder's District. The Founder's District is an area that contains primarily historic residential dwellings, many of which have been converted over to professional office space. This transition is expected to continue within this area, as traditional suburban-style residential uses become less suited for the area containing collector, large collector streets on each block, and an expanding market for higher-density mixed-use developments near major transit corridors evolve. The rezoning of the subject site to PO, professional office, is appropriate within the area of the Founder's District, and the proposed office adheres to the objectives of the Vision 2045 Master Plan for the downtown Las Vegas area. Staff therefore recommends approval of the requested site development plan review and rezoning requests subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here for item number 28 and 29? Hi. If you could come forward to the microphone, and I'll need your name and address for the record, and if you could tell us about your application, please.
Yeah. My name is Suchitra Yeragudi, and I actually live and work in downtown, and...
Could you spell your last name for me, Suchitra?
Yeragudi, it's Y-E-R-R-A-G-U-D-I.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to tell us about the application?
Like I said, I work and live in downtown, and I, when I was trying to renovate the house, I had more interest from people requesting for office use, which I wasn't thinking when I purchased the property. I think it gives a good opportunity for people who are looking for spaces to work in downtown because it's very central. And the people who actually put in, or whom I met while I was just at the property, sent me a long email talking about what they want to do there, and it kind of inspired me to go that route, and also to think about if I ever, in future, want to do a consulting, because I'm a software engineer and I would love to think about the more opportunities that space can give for me in future.
Okay, thank you. This was noted, if you could just stay here for one second, this was noted as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is exactly what we're looking for in the area, professional office. Almost everything has been converted into professional office, and I think staff has it absolutely right, so I will go ahead and like to make a motion on these two items.
Please do.
Yes, on item 28, ZON 75317, I move to approve, following staff's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. That motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, on item 29, SDR 75316, I would move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will go forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 6, 2019.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number 30, MOD 75347, applicant Olympia Companies Owner MF Land LLC, for possible action, request for a major modification of the Kyle Canyon Development Standards revised July 20, 2016, to amend the development standards to include private gated street sections, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Related item 31, VAC 75349, for possible action, request for petition to vacate public drainage easements to the northeast corner of West Sky Canyon Park Drive and Sky Village Road, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item number 32, TMP 75348, for possible action, request for tentative map for a 107-lot single-family residential subdivision, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item number 33, VAC 75331, applicant Olympia Companies Owner MF Land LLC, for possible action, request for petition to vacate public drainage easements on the west side of Grand Canyon Drive, north of West Sky Canyon Park Drive, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Related item 34, TMP 75323, for possible action, request for tentative map for a 170-lot single-family residential subdivision, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Related item 35, VAC 75330, applicant Olympia Companies Owner MF Land LLC, for possible action, request for petition to vacate public drainage easements on the northwest corner of Canyon View Lane, Sky Park Drive, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Related item 36, TMP 75328, for possible action, request for tentative map for a 123-lot single-family residential subdivision, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Related item 37, VAC 75355, for applicant Olympia Companies Owner MF Land LLC, for possible action, request for petition to vacate public drainage easement, southeast corner of Grand Canyon Drive and Sky Park Drive, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. And finally, related item number 38, TMP 75356, for possible action, request for a tentative map for a 107-lot single-family residential subdivision, Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested a major modification to include new private gated street sections in the Kyle Canyon Development Standards, with the intent to conform to the requirements established in the Residential Sprinkler Memorandum of Understanding that formed the basis of ordinance number 6630 of the Unified Development Code. Additionally, the applicant has proposed residential subdivision tentative maps and associated vacation petitions to vacate public drainage easements on four subject parcels within the area, with each map requesting to use the new proposed street sections. The subject drainage easements on the site were created in support of the interim drainage facilities under design for the adjacent infrastructure roadways. The proposed improvements on the accompanying tentative maps will remove the need of the interim drainage easements as they stand today. Staff has determined that the proposed street section widths, types exceed the adopted, those adopted in ordinance 6630 and are supported by staff. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed major modification and the four associated vacation and tentative maps with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received... Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to the applicant, I just want to note that we did open items number 30 through 38. I see on the broadcast it says 30 through 32, but we are hearing all the, all the related items on 30 through 38. Get your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant and the master developer for Sky Canyon, the master plan community of Sky Canyon. I'm here tonight with the next phase of Sky Canyon. It's an exciting time and it's doing very well. The community is building out quickly. We have four tentative maps, and if I could direct your attention to the overhead, this is located at the northeast corner of Sky Canyon Park Drive, right here, and Sky Village Road. The Smiths that's been constructed and is open is located right here. The Sky Canyon Community Center is located right here, so this is just to the north of the community center and to the west of the Smiths Shopping Center. This is just an overview to put it in relation with the overall master plan community of Sky Canyon. This is the quadrant that I was just referring to where the four tentative maps are before you tonight. Again, the commercial that's already existing, and then these four parcels are the tentative maps and related items that are before you. You'll see two of them are planned for medium-low, two of them are planned for medium-low attached. The four tentative maps conform with the land use plan. In fact, they come in lower in density than would otherwise be allowed. It's for Toll Brothers, for Woodside Homes, and for Polty, so we have three great developers that are coming on to these four parcels. I'm happy to go through the maps if you'd like, or if you have questions. Otherwise, we very much appreciate staff's recommendation of approval of these tentative maps, as well as the vacations of the drainage easements. Those were just for the interim drainage until the permanent facilities are underway, and again, we appreciate staff's recommendation of approval.
Thank you. This was notice as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in these items? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner DeSavio, Vice Chair DeSavio?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, unless anybody else has any other comments, I would just move to approve with staff's approval on these items.
Okay.
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve MOD, item number 30, MOD 75347.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Item number 31, VAC 75349.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Item number 32, TMP 74348, motion to approve.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Item number 33, VAC 75331, motion to approve.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
Item number 34, TMP 75323, motion to approve.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Item number 35, VAC 75330, motion to approve.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Item number 36, TMP 75328, motion to approve.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Item number 37, VAC 75355, motion to approve.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. That motion carries.
And item number 38, TMP 75356, motion to approve.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. And that motion carries.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, those items will all move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 6, 2019.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 39, VAR 75119, applicant Clark County School District Owner, School Board of Trustees, for possible action, request for variance to allow 120 parking spaces, while 129 are required at 2831 Palomino Lane, Ward 1, staff recommends denial. Related item 40, VAR 75120, for possible action, request for variance to allow deviations from Title 19 dot 10 dot 020 CV development standards, staff recommends denial. Related item 41, SDR 75121, for possible action, request for a site development plan review for a proposed two-story 94,056 square foot public school, primary development, Ward 1, staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a site development plan review for proposed new school development on an existing school site. The submitted justification letter indicates the existing school will be demolished after the 2018-19 school year and will reopen for the 2020-21 school year. The applicant has requested variances to address deviations to required onsite parking and civic development standards pertaining to allowable height, to allow a 39-foot tall building where 35 feet is the maximum allowed, to allow no trees within a portion of the north property line, where such are required to be planted at a maximum of 20 feet off center, to allow 10-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the north property line where 15 feet is the minimum required, and to allow the buildings within the development to not be oriented towards the front of the site. Staff has determined that the proposed development deviates from multiple civic development standards. As such, the proposed hardship has been deemed self-inflicted, and the required variance has reinforced the unsuitability of this site with the surrounding residential developments in the area. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the project and all associated land use entitlement applications. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Mark Minkett, DSH Architecture, 7250 Peak Drive, Las Vegas, representing Clark County School District, and to my left is Linda Perry. She's not feeling well, so I'm going to carry the meeting, hopefully. Okay, I'll take it, one, one, this is a great project, it's a historic site, and we're going to hopefully carry on and build a new facility that makes it historic and builds some more memories. Staff's report mentioned that there was no neighborhood meetings. In fact, we had two neighborhood meetings with Councilwoman Lois Tarkinian in attendance at both. One was on December 5 of 18, and the follow-up meeting with the neighbors were, was January 15 of 19. So in that, we had very lively discussions, and a lot of these conversations were taking place on these variances. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to take them one at a time for VAR 75119, if you don't mind. That's the variance for the parking. We, we got in 120 permanent parking stalls, but what's not allowed for in here is on the kiss-and-go lane, we have parallel parking continuously around the perimeter of the school. Yes, kiss-and-go, I'm sorry.
You said kiss-and-go.
I did say kiss-and-go, true.
Okay, thank you.
Kiss-and-go, and if you, if you, take a look at your monitors.
I've done it many times with my child.
Yes. You would come in this side here, and on your driver, passenger side, you'd be able to drive along the inside lane closest to the school. If you notice, we have our own private drive constructed onsite. You'd kiss and drop your child off and go, pull out and come around. So we feel that that, that gives us ample parking and, and drop-off, and would support the minus-nine stalls that we're asking for. Okay, moving on to the second variance, which was the variance on height. We have a small, and I'm going to go ahead and draw on this, if you guys could, we have, we've requested a couple areas to go to 39 feet, four inches, and that is the, where 35 feet is allowed. That is this stair tower right here, and then on this area, there's 2,500 square feet that straddles this area that is the library. We have taller walls on that to screen some of the AC units at that area because it was just tall. And if you notice, and the school design such it is today, you know, putting the school in the center and keeping away from the roads, or even our own private streets, we, we've got plenty of distance between the neighbors and the, we believe is a very minor impact for 4.4 feet. So we'd ask you to consider that. The park, the trees, part of the same variance was the trees in the front. You know, from designing, we, we really appreciate the idea of the trees 25 feet or 20 foot on center by code, we understand that, and we also understand the 15-foot landscape buffer. However, in negotiating and working out with the neighbors, they were very strong in the very first meeting. They liked their park-like atmosphere, and in fact, Mr. Wazin himself planted some of the trees along Palomino, and that's all along this edge here where the variances are. At that time, we had our 15-foot landscape buffer in and the required trees. They argued eloquently to keep the existing park-like atmosphere, and in fact, we completely redesigned the lot to maintain the existing trees. And we've got, it's going to be quite expensive to maintain the trees as they are, but it isn't. I agree with the neighbors, it's absolutely beautiful. We flipped it over, but in so doing, they were also concerned about the bus drop. So the bus drop, we put a 10-foot planter out in front and got as many trees in there as we could, even though we were going to have to take down some of the trees that they love. And so we hit a happy medium with them, and we got additional grass. So in that front there, although it does look damning that we didn't have enough trees in, we balanced it out with the neighborhood and got through it with them, and I'd ask you to consider that. And then let's talk about the, the last one in the variance on VAR 75120. That is the position of the school. And if you look at modern design on schools today, you know, the precious commodities are children inside these schools, and we're trying to set these schools up far enough away, and there's studies done on this at a federal level on how far you, you want your school away from a public way. And if you look at how schools need to flow, you want your bus drop to drop off directly to the kids' playground, so in the morning, they, they don't go through parking lots or cross parents driving in. If you notice on this site design, that's completely segregated bus drop, then you move directly south into the playground, so the kids are then absolutely secured, and then you place your building in the center of the lot. You know, studies show that, and it's sad to say, we need to keep so much of a buffer. If you'll notice on the southern edge of the school, due to federal guidance, we have barricades on there for vehicular protection from the facility, and this is a new thing that you're, you'll be seeing more and more of, and it also helps facilitate that long kiss-and-go lane all the way around. So what we're trying to do on this complete design is a couple of things, and why we need the variance here, and I think it's really a hill to die for for myself, is Palomino for 70 years has been the, the drop-off for the school out front. We now created 1,200 lineal feet of our own kiss-and-go lane off the, the street. So that helps out, and we also helped out on the security-wise, on the location. And with that, I would take it, oh, one of the conditions, if approved, item number 11 under SDR 75121, number 11, we would ask that that be stricken. That is actually a condition that was from one of our other previous schools. And if you take a look at that, that's, that's a Twin Lake ES school that you guys saw six months ago. So if we, if we can get that stricken, I just wouldn't want that to be muddying up the waters for us and staff later on. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. This was notice as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item, this application? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and maybe just ask Public Works Solution about this condition that was just brought up.
So, yeah, through, Mr. Chairman, yeah, these are things we tried to get corrected before the meeting, but for reasons, wasn't able to get through. So we'd like to delete condition 11, and also in condition 9, like to replace the words Diamond Head Drive and Page Street with Palomino Street.
Oh, Diamond Head, oh, got, understood.
Thank you for the clarification, Lucian. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Chair Cherry. What an exciting time in my neighborhood in Ward 1. I drive by this school probably 100 times a year. It's where I live, it's where, so I have just a few questions. I'm curious as to where the children that are there presently will be relocated to.
The school district has created a temporary location. If you notice, there's, there's three schools right now that are going to leapfrog to temporarily one of the older schools, and it's been emptied out right now, and I believe it is, oh, I can't remember the name of this facility right now, but it's in your jurisdiction. And what they're doing right now, Twin Lakes is actually occupying it, and when they move out, then Wazin's going to move into it, and there'll still be a bus stop in this area, so the parents that walk their kids to school, they can bring them here and get picked up by a bus and taken to the other location for the year.
Well, I'm sure you're aware of this, but I would say 88% of those families do walk their children to school. Okay, so you know that. Regarding the parking, the parking is always empty, right? I mean, there's a few cars, a few kiss-and-gos, and that's it, because this is a walkable school, and they come from the east side of, on the other side of Rancho East, they come as far as Mesquite and Rancho, and these families walk their childrens to school. With that being said, I wanted to ask you about, I'm skipping around because I, it's like so many thoughts in my mind about this because I, I know it so well. The sidewalk from Palomino going west to the school is shot. Is it your intention to replace and make better the sidewalk? So it's...
I believe what you're referring to is actually, it's not really a sidewalk, the way that we all look at sidewalks, that's actually a paved, temporary walk path that was installed at some point.
Well, keep in mind, it was a trail.
Well, it was a trail, absolutely, but what that is, what we call that today is a safe routes to school, and that's all being looked at right now, where we submit the package to the Building Department pending approval from you guys, submit it to the Building to Public Works, and we'll go through all of the safe routes, and we will then, just like at the other schools that you have approved, we've had to go back and fix all of those walking paths that were built, I'd have to say maybe 20 years ago now? Maybe plus 20 years for that walking path?
Yeah.
Just judging by the look of it.
It's just a shot.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, okay, and then the landscaping, I was going to say, is facing the north side that we're talking about, which faces Palomino, and to keep the trees that Mr. Wazin planted years ago, which I did not even know, is a compliment to you, sir, and to your staff, because they're so old and so cool, and just, you know, they're just awesome, so.
I wish I could take credit for it, but the school district allowed us to do it, and it was the neighbors who brought it up, because there's a lot of stuff there, historic stuff that we're going to salvage.
We, we love that old neighborhood. And, and keeping in, keeping in with the heart of the Mayor Pro Temp and Councilwoman, we always have to remember that she was first in education, and she will always be in education, so I know that this project is very near and dear to her heart. I don't have any other questions, except I'm so excited about it, and if my other commissioners are, want to talk about it, then if not, I'll be happy to make the motion.
Please do.
Thank you. Regarding item number 39, variance 75119, it's my pleasure to make the recommendation for approval.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
Thank you. Regarding item number 40, my motion is for approval, variance 75120.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. That motion carries.
And thank you. Regarding item 41, showing two conditions, one, that the street be changed, like Lucian said, from something to Palomino, right? And the other one, to just delete number 11 altogether?
Yes.
And you're in agreement with that? So with that, my motion will be for approval for SDR 75121.
Thank you, Commissioners. A motion on the floor, please cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 6, 2019.
Thank you, thank you for the, and thanks staff for working with us on this.
Thanks, hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 42, VAR 75324, applicant Vision Commercial 1 LLC, owner Safe Nest Temporary Assistance for Domestic Crisis Inc., for possible action, request for variance to allow 17-foot residential adjacency setback where 72 feet is the minimum required, and to allow a 76-foot residential adjacency setback where 155 feet is the minimum required on the south side of Smoke Ranch Road, east of Decatur Boulevard, Ward 5, staff recommends denial. Related item number 43, SUP 75325, possible action, request for special use permit for proposed 191-unit senior citizen apartment use, Ward 5, staff recommends denial. Staff recommends denial. Related item number 44, SUP 75326, for possible action or request for a special use permit for a 53-foot tall building where the airport overlay district limits the height to 35 feet, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Related item number 45, SDR 75327, for possible action or request for site development, plan review for a proposed 191-unit senior citizen apartments development with waivers to allow a 0-foot landscape buffer on the north and west property line where 15 feet is the minimum required, and a 0-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the east property line where 8 feet is the minimum required. Also to allow a 0-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the north and west property line where 8 feet is required adjacent to the convenience store, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Clear the staff report, please.
Excuse me, Chairman Cherry. I apologize. I will need to abstain from this item and recuse myself. My husband is on the Board of Safe Nest, so in an abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain from this item.
Thank you for the disclosure. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is located in the southwest sector of the general plan and has a current land use designation of GC, General Commercial, and zoning designation of C1 Limited Commercial. The senior citizens apartments use is a conditional land use in the C1 zoning district. However, a special use permit is required as the proposed use does not comply with conditional use regulations number 1, number 2, and number 4, which require the roof lines to break down the massing of the structures, ground-level retail to be provided, and for the elevations to highlight the difference in uses through a variation in volume and proportion. Furthermore, the existing airport overlay standards allow a maximum height of 35 feet on the northwest corner of the subject site and a 70-foot maximum height for the southwest portion. As proposed, the 53-foot tall building height exceeds the height of the 35-foot maximum outlined in the airport overlay. Therefore, a special use permit is required. As such, the Federal Aviation Administration must be notified of the proposed construction or alteration of this development, and a condition of approval has been added to assure that this requirement is met. Additionally, a variance has been requested to allow a reduction of the required residential adjacency setbacks of the structures and waivers to allow deviations from required landscape buffer widths and exceptions of required planting materials on site. Staff does not support this request. Staff has determined that the proposed project is not compatible with surrounding development in the area as evidenced by the requested special use permits, variance waivers, and associated exceptions of planting materials. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this project, subject to conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Vincent Shetler, S.C.H.E.T.T.L.E.R., 10091 Park Run, and I am the applicant.
Thank you, Vincent.
Thank you, Chair Person Cherry and the rest of the council. Today bring forward to you a special use permit and variances for, and designer view for a site located on about 5.33 net acres at the, can you guys see?
Yeah.
The map, okay. Located at the corner behind a Circle K, existing Circle K at the corner of Smoke Ranch, which is 100 foot right away, and Decatur, which is 120 foot right away. The property is currently Zone C1 in a general commercial area. We are requesting to do a senior apartment development, which is lacking in the area. It is an allowable use with a use permit, and there are some additional variances that we are requesting, and some other waivers for land use and setbacks. And I'll walk you through those. This is the actual development as we perceive it today, and I'll just walk you through another rendering. And on to our site plan. The first two variations and special use permits are, one for the use. We are proposing 161-unit four-story wrap, single entrance gated, the entire site will be gated, home for security of the residents, with a portica chair for entrance. We have 161 units on an interior corridor, single entry, main entry unit. There will be a fob system at the entrance so that the residents and only certain people can enter the units. There will also be a fob at the gates for those that have parking. We have adequate parking. We're not asking for any waivers on the parking. The interior part of the project will have an indoor/outdoor pool. The wall for the pool will open up so that it will join the other amenities that are interior that are being designed. We also have five townhome buildings, 24-inch, 24 feet in height, six units in each building, two stories, they're only 24 feet in height. So to walk you through some of the variances that are being requested on the setbacks, some of them are actually pretty simple. There's a three-to-one slope requirement within the C1 zone to do residential adjacency standards, and because of that three-to-one slope, the requirement for a 24-foot building adjacent to existing residential is three-to-one slope. These are 24-foot tall buildings, so that would require a 72-foot setback, which, these are about the same height as existing two-story homes that are on the side. There are some one-story homes, they're not all two stories. So that is one of the requests. The other request is because we have here these townhomes that butt the residential, we have deeper backyards for those townhomes. They will be maintained by the management, which is myself, my management, and we are only required to do an eight-foot landscape buffer here. We actually have 17-foot backyard, so we feel that we need that, we meet that, but because we have the walls actually meet and will join, we didn't want an eight-foot landscape buffer behind another wall so that people can go in there and hide or, you know, create mischief if anybody jumps the fence. So that is the second one. The third request is adjacent to this convenience site here. There is no landscape buffer on the interior of the convenience store, and they have a very minimal buffer against the wall. We're actually providing 24, 24 feet, but we don't have any landscape, landscaping on the interior side, only in this, only in this area right here. So we are requesting landscape buffer here, as well as a small portion of the parking here where there will not be. We're trying to create fire lanes and meet fire codes, so we feel we are 100% compliant with fire code for circulation, which is why that became necessary, to get fire circulation around the interior of the site. The other site, the other portion, because of the three-to-one slope in a C1 zone, is because of the building height, which is 53-foot with a 5-foot parapet on the very, on the very top including that, we've actually created a 76-foot buffer on the eastern side of the project and an 81-foot buffer on the south side of the project. So if you have the existing neighborhood, neighbors here, we have a 23-foot buffer for landscaping that includes a walking path, a dog run, a community garden, bocce ball courts, that, things of that nature, before you get to the 24-foot driveline, and then you get to a 17-foot parking stall, and then you have another 12, a little over 12-foot before you even get to the building. So we feel that we've adequately buffered the existing residences, and on the same side here, it's 81 feet. And so that explains the variances for the setbacks and the landscaping. The other issue is the variance or the special use permit for the airport height restriction. And I'm going to throw up a different map for that temporarily, which, here you have the North Las Vegas Airport. These are actually taken from the city's website. These are the flight paths and the noise attenuation zones, so we're pretty far distance away from that. You have the fastest station and the Texas Station, which are obviously higher than 35 feet closer to the runways. There are 75-foot power lines existing today that run adjacent and actually through the northern border of the site. So you have the 75-foot power lines here and the, it goes right in, right in between our site. There's a 75-foot buffer on the interior, I'm sorry, 35-foot height restriction on about the eastern half of our site, and then it goes down to a 75-foot. So the actual buffer goes through our site. So it actually goes through our building. So we feel that when we go through and we process the applications that are going to be a condition, that we won't have any problem, and we are understanding and accepting of that condition that they have added to that variance. And so, you know, we're pretty excited about this project. The area really needs senior housing, and I really open it up to any questions that you might have. I think I've covered most of the, if not all, of the issues that we're dealing with, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion.
Well, there's no doubt, sir, that this unique application for the seniors is in desperate need in Ward 5. I don't have a single problem with it. I will be looking forward to supporting it in its entirety if, there's no other comments.
Vice Chair DeSalvio?
Yeah, the question I have is, even if it gets approved tonight, you still have to go through the FAA for final approval, and that's even if it gets passed at City Council or without that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we have started that process.
Okay. That was the only thing.
Commissioner Toussaint?
Yeah, I drive by this corner probably twice a month, and someone who is eligible to live in a senior facility, I can tell you that this is really needed in this area, and you will have my support tonight as long as the, make the motion. Well, if there are no other objections, I will make the motion.
I actually have a, Commissioner Schlobbins?
I'll just make one quick comment. I've, I mean, the FAA will, will look at this in the future, but I've flown around this airport about a thousand times, practicing patterns, and this is a lot lower than a lot of the other obstacles in the areas, so I have no problem with this.
Can I just have one question for the applicant?
Sure.
Vincent. On Decatur, is that one of the areas where there's a 0-foot landscape buffer?
No, we actually, we don't have, we have a 15-foot landscape buffer along Decatur and Smoke Ranch.
That's right.
So we have a 5-5 and a 5 on the entire length of our drive, whereas in there is only a 5-foot sidewalk and brick, up to a brick wall on every other length of the street.
Just, just, okay, okay. Thank you, that, thank you very much. Commissioner Schlobbins?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, item 42, VAR 75324, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions based on testimony heard today.
Is a motion on the floor? Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 43, SUP 75325, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions based on testimony heard today.
Is a motion on the floor? That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 44, SUP 75326, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions based on testimony heard today.
Is a motion on the floor? Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, finally, item 45, SCR 75327, move to approve, subject to conditions based on testimony heard today.
Is a motion on the floor? Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, those items will all move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 6, 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Moving on to item 188. VAR 75339, applicant, owner, Colin Living Trust et al., for possible action or request for variance to allow existing accessory structures that are not aesthetically compatible, compatible with the principal dwelling, to allow 0-foot separation from a main building where 6 feet is required, a 0-foot side yard setback where 3 feet is required, and to be located in front of the principal dwelling unit where such is not allowed. At 1500 South 13th Street, Ward 3, staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow two existing accessory structures, carports, to be forward to the primary structure, to have a 0-foot separation from the primary structure where 6 feet is required, and to have a 0-foot side yard setback where 3 feet is required. As no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, staff concludes that the hardship is preferential in nature. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. Please note that there have been additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Robert Calvin at 1500 South 13th Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89104.
Thank you.
And I would like, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your time and your service. I'm asking for the variances needed to be able to keep my carports. My family and I have lived in our home in the Hunter's area for over 40 years. I approached city planning about 15 years ago and they said the only thing I could put up was a temporary structure. However, my wife and I were unable to find any that would complement our home. So last year, I decided to build a carport in the driveway to cover my truck. My wife liked it so well, she asked me to build one on the other driveway to cover her car, which I did. We got a lot of compliments that the carports sit well in our neighborhood. Neither carport blocked any of our neighbors' views. We then received a notice that we got proper variances and plans for the carports. I went to the city planning office and asked them what I needed to do to keep my carports. They advised me that I had to hire an engineer to draft the proper plans and apply for the variances. My engineer, Larry Sanchez, drew up the necessary plans and submitted them to the city planning office. I paid the application fee and obtained letters from my next-door neighbors and other people in the neighborhood. They were not, they were not opposed to the carports. Those letters have been submitted, along with the photos of the two carports. I have copies of the photos with me if you would like them. Okay, all the city employees I have dealt with have been very helpful and professional. It is my hope that we can continue this process so I can keep my carports. I was born in Las Vegas and raised in Nevada. I'm a Vietnam veteran and a retired union electrician. Now, when, my house was built was in the 1940s. It had a little carport on the side, but when I bought my house, my carport was made into a room, so I did not have the self-inflicted problem. It was done for me. So I was there without carports. I was there without any protection for my vehicles. The, we're always 80 to 90 days a year over 100 degrees. It is really tough on vehicles. And as far as aesthetic value, well, I decided to build a carport that wouldn't burn down. Therefore, I had to not put the shingle roof like that's on my house. But I did pick the roof that matched the peak of my house, because my house is all steel. The steel siding and then the steel peak of the roof, I picked the closest material that would match the peaks of the roof to make it aesthetic. And if you drive down the street, you very rarely, I notice it's there unless you're looking for it. But I'll turn it over to Larry.
Larry Sanchez, 7844 Soaring Brook Street, here on behalf of the client as well. We're asking, if you will, from staff for forgiveness for building these, having these carports here without a permit. Again, it's for some shade for the vehicles, since we have no other location, hence promoting a self-imposed hardship. There's two driveways. We realize that the material for these carports are one-hour fire-rated, non-cabooseable material, and we're asking for staff's approval.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? I see one person coming up. If you guys could step aside, we do have three microphones. If I can get your name and address for the record, if you're for or against, and why?
I'm sorry. S.I.M.O.N.E. I'm at 1320 Bracket Avenue, which is just on the street from Mr. Mark Calvin. I'm at 1320 Bracket Avenue, which is just on the street from Mr. Mark Colvin's residence. I drive by these carports every day, and they look fine to me. I see nothing wrong with the aesthetics to them, so I support. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Anyone else like to be heard? How you doing?
I'm Thomas Gross, 1407 Griffith and 1508 Griffith and 15th, and also I own 1713 Cochran. I know this gentleman. I've been in the neighborhood for about 25 years, and the aesthetics of the house and the carports look pleasing to the neighborhood and the area. Those homes are hunter's homes. A lot of times, they had one carport, but as families grew, they usually closed in the carport and added on to the house to accommodate a growing family. Those are more or less bungalows. I do approve what I had seen with the carports. Also, the mechanical connections that are used to fasten the structure to the concrete are definitely acceptable in construction.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to the commission for discussion. I see Commissioner Quinn's.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment before Commissioner Schloben makes his comment and his motion. This is the old Bishop Gorman High School neighborhood where I went to school, and this is not going out of the norm of what's around there. It's all over the place, so you'll see my support this evening, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Schloben, excuse me.
Yeah, well, I do have a little bit of an issue with it, because it is in the front yard, and the entire carport is within the front yard. If it was on the side or something of those sorts, I might be able to find a way to justify this. You have neighbors out here in support, and so it's good to see neighbors in support. You know, I mean, there's a few comic cards that were submitted and letters of protest, but typically when it comes down to anything being built in front of the primary residence, which is against our plan and code, that's something that I rarely have ever, ever supported. So, I'll make a motion. We'll see where it goes and see if another motion is needed.
Okay. Please do.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item 188, VAR 75339, make a motion to follow staff's recommendation of denial.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. So, we can get a motion in the opposition?
I'd be happy to. Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding item number variance 75339, my motion this evening is for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 6, 2019.
Moving on to 189 and 190, Commissioner Rousch?
I will need to abstain from items 189 and 190. My husband works at Cobble Banker, and they own the property next door to this application. And I do feel that this application would affect the value of this property, and so out of an abundance of caution and my counsel with the city attorney, I will be abstaining from this item. Thank you.
Thank you for the disclosure. Item number 189, SGP 75322, applicant HSC North Las Vegas LLC, owner Red Hook Simron LLC, for possible action request for special use permit for proposed outdoor storage, accessory use with a waiver to allow no outdoor storage screening at 6658 Sky Point Drive, Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Related item 190, STR 75321, for possible action on request for site development plan review for proposed 19,097 square foot general retail store with a 21,400 square foot outdoor storage area with a building waiver, with a waiver of town center interior parking lot landscaping and a building facade development standards. Ward Six, staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a site development plan review and special use permit for a proposed 19,097 square foot general retail store with a 21,400 square foot accessory outdoor storage area on three acres. The application includes requested waivers to allow no screening of outdoor display areas located on the southeastern perimeter of the building, to allow 18.5% building facade glazing where 70% is required, and to allow 19 trees within the interior parking lot area where 23 trees are required. Despite the requested waiver, staff finds that the overall development proposal will be similar to other development in the area and can be operated harmoniously within the established commercial shopping center development. Therefore, staff has recommended approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Trey Ginright. I'm with Jay Consulting, 208 Green Hill Road, Fairhope, Alabama.
Could you spell your last name for me, please?
Ginright, J-I-N-R-I-G-H-T.
Thank you, Mr. Ginright.
Thank you for having us this evening. I represent Tractor Supply and their applicant before you tonight. Tractor Supply is a hooved animal pet supply store. It's not to be confused with an industrial heavy equipment type of facility. The site plan I have before you on the monitor represents the building, parking around the perimeter, and then our fenced outdoor display area, and items that are in that location are typically gates, fencing, feed troughs, items that are large merchandise for display only, or for sales and display only. We have areas across the front of the store that we call our permanent sidewalk display areas. Those are similar to what you may see in a Lowe's or Home Depot, where there may be a lawnmower, seasonal items that are displayed in that location. And then we also have a outdoor display area located in this location and here. Those typically, that's referred to as our permanent trailer and equipment display area. Typically, what's in those areas are small utility trailers for maybe a lawnmower. They pull behind a small vehicle and potentially three-point tractor implements, maybe a bush hog or set a disc or something of that nature. And that's what displays in those locations. We have worked with the staff, and we have reviewed the conditions of approval, and we accept those conditions, and would be glad to...
Could you flip that around for us? Thank you.
And would be glad to address any more questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ginright. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? If I could just have you step aside. I see some people coming up. If we can get your name and address for the record, if you're for or against, and why.
Good evening. Now, my name is Molly Hamrick, and the address is 6628 Sky Point Drive.
And I'm Bob Hamrick. Same.
We're due. So, I just wanted to, we're opposed to it, and specifically all the waivers that they have asked, the applicant has asked for. And while we're not opposed, the applicant coming to Las Vegas and to even that part of Las Vegas, we are opposed to the waivers that they're asking for. So, this is a 12-acre retail business park, and I know the staff comments throughout state that it's an existing shopping center, but there's six existing buildings there right now. One is a school. The other one's a cat hospital. There's a church, the office building, and then a C-store, and the C-store is on the corner there, and that takes up about 7% of the entire subdivision. So, it's not really an existing shopping center. It's more of a business retail park. And so, we had met with the applicant back in December and specifically asked them for information regarding these unscreened areas, and that's, that's one of our biggest concerns. There's 6,400 square feet of unscreened storage areas in which they can park lawn mowers or trailers and things that I mentioned. They sell hay. Their website states that their biggest client are rural farmers and farmers that do it for a hobby, so it's definitely a different type of materials than your standard materials you'd see in a retail store. In terms of the unscreened area, I mean, there's, there's different, there's four different areas within the Town Development Standard Guidelines that state that all the outdoor storage areas and outdoor storage accessory areas would be screened and defined, aesthetically screened, and not seen from streets or other buildings. And clearly, based on their site map, you can see, I don't know if I can even see that, but that they showed you that all these outdoor areas that are unscreened are completely visible to all the passerbyers from the traffic and also from the other buildings in the area. So, that's something that, when we built our building out there, we spent $6 million on a Class A office building, we expected the Town Center Guidelines to dictate everything else that went in that area. And having unscreened storage facilities with permanent displays of tractor trailers, riding lawnmowers, if you go on their website, all this stuff is sold there, is not something that, if we thought was going to happen, we probably wouldn't have spent $6 million on a building out there. So, the unscreened areas are certainly a cause for us to have concern and pause. The other thing is, the waiver of the landscaping, it's a 17% decline in what we've had to build our building and everybody else in the community as well. So, they're asking for 17% of their landscape guidelines that was dictated by the Town Center Guidelines to be removed, which, again, we built that building in 2004. Those guidelines have been in place since then. We've maintained it. We've maintained our landscaping and the islands and everything around there, and we've continued to uphold that. And the other item is, they're asking for a 74% reduction in the building facade guideline for glazing. 74% reduction. And I just, I can't imagine that that is harmonious with anybody else that's out there. And again, I can show you the pictures of the other structures that are there right now. Even the C-store has more glazing on it than what they're asking for. So, there's the front of the C-store. Here's the side view of the C-store. Again, they've met all the glazing guidelines when they built their building. Here's the church that operates out there. Again, you can see all their glazing, front and side. Here's the cat hospital with all their glazing and landscaping. The same thing on the side of the building. The existing school that's out there has all of this glazing on it as well. Again, glazing is very expensive compared to concrete, so we've spent a lot of money to those other builders out there or the owners out there. Here's the school, and you can see from this next photo that even their exterior area in which they house their playground is very well screened. There's a nice block wall there. There's a tremendous amount of landscaping, and so you're not able to see that from either the streets or the other buildings in the area. And here's the building we own as well. And again, we complied with all the Town Center Guidelines with landscaping. All of our islands are landscaped. We've got a tremendous amount of glazing on our building. Here's the side of our building, and if we could have gotten away with less glazing out there, we probably would have. And then we have an outside area as well, in which we have an area for us to meet. We've got tables out here and whatnot, but it's highly screened as well, so that we're protecting the other owners within that subdivision. And then you go back to the applicant, and they have very few windows and glazing on that. So, they're asking for a tremendous reduction from, again, what Town Center Guidelines have dictated since the early, early, early 2000s, and the rest of us that have built out in the subdivision have complied with. So, it's a very small business park, retail park. It is not a shopping center by any stretch of the imagination. You get some retail out of the C-store, I guess, but cat hospital, church, my office building has 20 tenants in it besides myself and in a school. So, I would, for those reasons, be hoping that the council will deny their waivers.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What she said.
Thank you, Mr. Hamrick. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Chris Bishop. Thank you for your time, commissioners. I manage the real estate office at 6628 Sky Point in the same building. My wife manages an administrative office in the same building. My child goes to the school in the same parking lot. The only thing I don't do is live on the premise, but I'm sure my owner would be okay with that if I was more productive. I'm opposed to the waivers and the special use permit. I believe that all the other tenants, the applicants there, have conformed and done what they needed to do to keep up with the building itself. As a realtor, I see the value in protecting the community, the area, and the property values by adding in all of those added options. With my daughter going to the school there, I think the screening is important, especially with the traffic. We do have traffic issues in there with drop-offs and pickups and parents that speed through the parking lot and kids that are wandering around trying to get from their parents' car into the building. I think that the more we can do to be protective of that, I don't think you usually see a type of product like this that close to a school. For that reason, I'm opposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Anyone else from the public like to be heard? I see the last person coming up. I'll need your name and address for the record, unless there's anyone else out there that wants to come up.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Bert DeZendorf for the Law Office of B.E. DeZendorf. I represent the landowner that is selling the property to HIX Netaker for the Tractor Supply Store, Red Hook Simron LLC. I just want to be really clear that we have been working tirelessly to try to obtain the approval of all of the adjoining association members. And Ms. Hamrick, you know, we've worked with her on this project, on prior projects, trying to satisfy everyone's concerns. She's under the impression this is an office business park, when in fact, it was originally planned for a shopping center. They recently annexed the gas station in, brought it into the association, a retail use. And I guess the most important point is that between my client, Red Hook, and Coral Academy of Science, they control 67% of the association, and we have had multiple meetings with Coral Academy of Science. I'm sorry, they're not here tonight to speak on the matter, but they are in full support of this. We have been working with them to amend the CCNRs for the project, to come up ways to improve it. They were talking about, the school's in full support of it. We're talking about fencing between the project and the new Tractor Supply Store, working together. They're not, they have a two-story building, just like the office building that Ms. Hamrick has. They have no concerns about the outside storage and no concern about that at all. And we did have, we talked about it, everything will be in the display area, will be below the fence line. They won't have any products exceeding the height of the fence line. It's all going to be screened. Ms. Hamrick raised some concerns about the views from her second-story building, and, you know, the applicant agreed to put up larger trees, pine trees, screening trees that'll screen the area. So, we've worked with everybody, but I, the impression was that the association wasn't in support of this, but the association, 67% of the association is in full support of it, and we feel that the balance, some of the balance of the members are in support also. So, I just wanted to clarify that point and see if you had any questions relating to the association or the other landowners or the school.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no one else, I have to close the public comment. I see one person. Folks, if there's anyone else in the crowd, if you could please come up, we do have three microphones. I need your name and address for the record, please, if you're for or against.
Christian Solerno, 6180 Donald Nelson, 89131. I'm just, I own a two-acre horse property, and I'm just in support of it, just because we don't have a lot out here as the horse community, and this is like an exciting thing for us. And I can tell you that there would be a lot more people here, but I know they're out supporting Horses for Heroes right now in Lone Mountain. So, and I know that they support 4H, they support the veterans and everything like that. I'm in support of it. I know a lot of my friends are, and this is something exciting, because we don't have a lot as the horse community, and we are getting squeezed out with developers and everything. So, we would just like to see this happen for just our horsey people.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm Kim Solerno. I'm also at 6180 Donald Nelson, Las Vegas, 89131. I pretty much reiterate everything Mr. Solerno said as well. I also, also work for Coral Academy. I am a registrar there. We've discussed the project. There's been other projects that have come into play, one being a storage facility and the other being a hotel. Based on the options we've been readily available to, this has actually been the best option we've been presented with. I realize that there are some concerns with the aesthetics of the school or the building, but other than that, I'm in full swing support. I agree, as horse community, we are slowly getting squeezed out. I feel like we're, our rule preservation is getting limited with the land being developed by builders. This is just something that I think our people would... something that I think our people would really need. It would be, I think the location is ideal. I know it's next to a school, but as far as freeway access and other people, it's easy for them, as well as the Northwest community pretty much doesn't have a feed store, other than a couple local businesses which are kind of more southeast of us. So at the time, right now, presently, we don't have a lot of options. So this coming to our neighborhood, I think there's some, not, I think some people are uneducated as to what the store really carries. And it's, it's more of like, I feel like it's a Home Depot meets a feed store. It has similar quality to another business in Town Cal Ranch. So I'm really excited about it. I hope it gets approved. So we would really like your support.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, seeing no one else from the public, I will close the public hearing and ask Mr. Genwright to come back up, and I'll give you a couple minutes for a rebuttal.
Yes, sir. In relation to the glazing on this store, our store is providing glazing. It's these windows in the front, we've got store shelving behind those, and so you just won't be able to see through them. So some of the requests for this waiver is the fact that we've actually got merchandise that'll be sitting on the back of those windows, so you won't be able to look through those. So I wanted to clarify, one of the reasons why the request for the waiver, why that was that case. The landscape parking request is orientated with the parking right in front of the structure. And it's this location right here is where we don't have the six spaces per island. But we've all set that with additional landscaping around the perimeter where it was not required. And so the intent of this was to buffer our whole site. We've added a cluster of landscaping, this location, location here, and all the way around the perimeter of that. So it wasn't like we were not trying to landscape the site. We've added a lot more landscaping than what would have been normally required, in addition to help offset the buffers. Now, from the right-of-way, you can't see ourselves facilities. These are internal private roadways right here, and we are providing additional buffering on there. So the fact that, to say that we're not providing buffers is not completely accurate. We are with our additional landscaping. So I wanted to point that out as well. And for the record, this is a five-and-a-half-million-dollar store is what we're building here.
Thank you, five-and-a-half-million-dollar stores. Thank you for your comments. I'll turn it over to the Commissioner. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Genwright. I have just a couple questions down here. My first question is, these tractors and stuff, if in fact this goes through, there's not going to be like, test-driving down streets or anything, is there?
No, ma'am.
Well, how do you test-drive a tractor?
The name is misleading. It's not, they don't sell tractors. They're small, little lawnmowers. It's not a heavy industrial site. It's, it's a pet supply type of store. The traffic generation here, the staff had provided a report that based the traffic off of general retail that showed a peak hour trip of 74 trips an hour. Tractor Supply actually has its own ITE code. The max traffic peak hour for this is only 27 trips an hour. This is a very low-traffic-generating facility here. It's a big store, but it has very minimal impact, much less than what the staff had in their store, in their report. So.
And my only other question is, weekdays, your hours of operation are what?
They are, I want to say they are, we had it in our, in our letter, they're listed in our report, I want to say they're around seven to nine, I believe is what the.
And weekends as well?
Yes, ma'am. But this, it's stated specifically in our report.
Okay, thank you. I just was worrying about the tractors flying through the parking lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. I'm from Texas, and we had tractor supply companies in our city and all around us, and so even in Texas, in a rural area, there weren't many big tractors, and there's no test-driving of the tractors running down the street. So it's more of, like the gentleman was saying, smaller products. I think they have some clothing on the interior, couple of other products that I've had to order from your store out of Texas and Atlanta and have it shipped here, because we didn't have those products here in, here in town. One of them being remedy, which helps us control our rush out here. So a lot of the outdoor storage has traditionally been set up in a, in a nice manner. It's not trashy, it's not overloaded, and so I wouldn't have a problem in supporting this item, especially since they're having a lot of landscaping for buffering. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'll quickly say, my wife and I have a horse property, so I understand the need for what comes out of a store like this, and we do, yeah. Well, you're invited. And I can see there's, I know there's definitely a need out in this area, but I will say I do have heartburn with how it, it does, doesn't feel consistent with the other buildings from a glazing standpoint. It just feels architecturally out of place to me. Now, need, that's a different thing, so I, you know, but I just want to throw that out there before I go to Commissioner DeSalvio. You know, I'm trying to organize my thoughts here on where I sit with it, but it just, I got some heartburn with it, so. No interruption, no interruption. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Okay, Ms. Greenwright, I'm going to, I'm going to pick some brains around here, because I gotta see this move forward, because it's such a need for this community. I've been out there a very long time, and closest place you can go is Jones and Ranch that'll get any kind of feed. So this is definitely something that needed to come to the community. We just got to kind of massage it a little bit, I think. And what I mean by that is, the aesthetics of the building would definitely, if you could put your, your elevations back up, that'd be great. If there is some, I know, I'm looking at the side view in the back, if more fake facade glass, because that's basically what we're talking about here. This is not something that you're going to see through. It's, it's just basically a facade.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If they added a little bit more of that facade glass around the building, would it, because what I'm trying to get at is, how did we, if we have a Town Center design plan, how was this able to be approved if it's underneath the, and how did staff, well, not approve, but exactly, staff recommend approval when we're not within, you know, we hear from Ms. Hamrick that, you know, we have a 74% deficiency on glazing. So how did staff wrap their head around it to, to offer approval? And I got more follow-up, but I just, I need to kind of figure this out.
Well, staff determined that the appropriateness of the use and the mitigation by adding additional landscaping to screen the proposed building from the right-of-way and from the adjacent properties located within the staff report was sufficient to mitigate and negate that impact to the surrounding properties.
So we did a little horse trading, right? Okay. Second thing I have is the screened area. If you would put up the site plan, and then show me where exactly you're going to put, you know, these lawnmowers and stuff, and I'm sure you'll have them out during the day, and then kind of, kind of like Home Depot does, they, they put out the barbecues to put the chain through it, at the end of the night, they drag them in. Is that your guys' intent as well?
Yes, sir. These are, these are permanent display areas, and you know, and much of this merchandise may stay out overnight. They chain it off, but it's designated, unlike maybe a Home Depot or Lowe's where it's just placed out there. This is designated so it doesn't interfere with the pedestrian access across the site. So these, these areas are located and tied down tightly. This fenced area right here is your eight-foot-tall aluminum fence with the screening on it. So this area in this location is fenced.
Okay, but you, so you're still wanting to put stuff out front, but you said that it would be an impact on pedestrian access.
No, it does not. It does not impact. The way the site is set up, that it is set up so that it does not impact your pedestrian access. You have ADA access off of the city street through this, this sidewalk connection point right here. Everything is outside of that. So those areas are tied down tight, so that they, they are designated, so that they don't interfere with other operations of safety and welfare.
I just, I just have a concern, because you just said that that stuff will be chained and staying out overnight, and I don't want it to look like, and I saw, I mean, I'm, I'm for allowing it with the condition that at night, that stuff would have to come in. I don't have a problem with it being on display during the day, but if you're closed at night, I don't want it left out there. I'm trying to find a happy medium here for you. I'm trying to get this on and try to make everybody happy at the same time, and I think those are, a lot of the concerns was, left out overnight, and I would just want to see if there's a way that we could come to a little horse trading here ourselves, and you know, at night, you take that product inside.
You know, the site, this, this package has been before Architectural Review Board, and that's how, they have approved this.
Excuse me?
The Architectural Review Board for the area has approved this.
That's nice of them.
These areas here, you know, for you that may not know Tractor Supply, they're a national company. They have 1,800 stores across the country right here, and they are a first-rate community citizen. They support the, the 4H, as the gentleman said earlier. They're very active in, in, in bringing positivity to the area. This area for it to be in front of their store is not a, an area of disrepair. It's first-class, so it sets up that way.
Sir, I'm not, listen, I'm not here to get confrontational over it. I'm just telling you right now, it's going to be very hard for me, even though I'd love to have you in our community, to move forward, unless we could come to some kind of agreement, because if not, then I'm going to make you fence it, and I don't think you want to do that. So it'd be in your best interest to kind of take it into consideration that you would bring that stuff in at night.
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman, Lou, can I just say one thing?
Go for it.
You know, this, sir, right here, these people here have no crime, they have no problems, they're well-established, and this stuff sitting outside, you can bet me, within a month or two, it's going to increase people that are not wanted to be lingering around to try to steal anything that's going to upset these lifestyles of these business owners. So I'm, I'm with you to support it, but I'm with this guy, because he knows what he's talking about.
Yes, sir.
So I guess I'll ask you again, would you consider, close the business, whatever your hours are, at the end of the night, just like everybody else in my ward, Home Depot, Lowe's, they take their stuff in at night?
That's right.
That's all I'm asking. If not, I'm going to ask you, then you might want to obey this item.
I mean, that, that's an operational feature that I don't have.
It's a condition, and I'm putting it on it.
I don't have the authority to agree to, I guess it's.
Then we'll hold it. Then I, I request that you ask for an abatement.
Yes, sir.
Or I can make a motion to deny. You tell me.
Yes, sir. I guess we'll do the abatement.
Okay.
Thirty days?
Thirty days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for abeyance for 30 days.
For item number 189 and 190? That would be till March 12th.
Thank you, Vice Chair DeSalvio. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Sounds like there's a lot to work out between now and then as well. And that motion carries. Okay, thank you.
I would, I would advise the applicant on that item that was obeyed to reach out to Vice Chair DeSalvio for a meeting to discuss some of this, concerns that are out there, to hopefully get resolved on it before coming back to the meeting, and then hopefully, possibly with the neighbors, if, if there's some progress made, so. Moving on to item number 191, SUP 75306, applicant Ban Tai Massage Establishment Owner Heard Properties LLC, for possible action, request for a special use permit for proposed 2,400-square-foot massage establishment, with a waiver to allow 178-foot separation from a residentially-zoned property where 400 feet is required, at 1600 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite 120, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Can we get this draft report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is located in Area 1 of the downtown Las Vegas overlay within the Gateway District. The proposed massage establishment use will operate out of a 2,400-square-foot suite within a 13,822-square-foot commercial building. While the applicant's, while the applicant has requested a distance separation waiver from a residentially-zoned property, staff finds the request to be harmonious with the surrounding area, as the residentially-zoned property is currently utilized as a motel use. For this reason, the proposed use is deemed compatible with the surrounding uses, therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note that additional letters of support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, thank you for having me. Ami Darwin Boyan.
Thank you. And your address?
For the location of Ban Tai Retreat, 1600 South Las Vegas, Unit 120, 130.
Thank you. Can you tell us about your application, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you tell us about your application, why it should be approved today?
Yes. Me and my partner here, we own a business in Houston, Texas also. We like to go ahead and expand our passion into massage therapy. We've been doing this for many years, and we like to, for, I sit in office also, so massage therapy is very important for human self-care. So we truly believe that it's going to be very helpful for, for the community.
Okay, thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item. Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner, Commissioner Roush.
Why don't I get?
Oh, I saw your light on.
I'm going to try to say this as delicately as I can, but no.
Thank you.
Thank you. I feel that I'm confused by staff's recommendation for approval and that it's a harmonious use. You know, this is a retail center that I used to go to all the time when I was a kid growing up. Odyssey Records used to be here. I love this shopping center, and it's, it's kind of gone into a state of disrepair. I'd love to see somebody come and renovate it. I'm fresh out of money right now, but if I had some money, I'd buy it and fix it up, because I think it's an iconic building. But that said, I didn't know it was zoned for motel use. I must have misunderstood, or I must have misheard something, because I thought staff said it was a harmonious use, because it was a massage use and it was zoned for motel. Did I get that completely wrong? Have I been dreaming? What did I hear?
Mr. Roush, the residentially-zoned property, which is affecting the distance separation waiver to the north of this property, is zoned R4 for high-density residential. However, it's being operated and utilized as an existing motel, so there are no existing residences there.
You were talking the surrounding area, not the, not the subject property?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad we clarified that. Thank you very much.
I'm here all night.
It's not even late, and I'm getting punchy. I apologize. So I guess my concern is, is the use. I'm always concerned when there's a massage use. I'm extra concerned when there's a massage use in a resort corridor. You know, it's, it's something that we're very sensitive to. We have to be very sensitive to, because there have been so many applicants who've come before us and had their licenses revoked for activities that were not as approved, let's say. So with that said, I'm, I'm very wary of this. I'm, I'm like Commissioner Cherry on the last application. I'm trying to organize my thoughts as to what I want to do on this one, because I don't feel good about it. Are there any other of my fellow commissioners who have any comments?
I'm, I'm happy to say, Commissioner Roush, or happy to comment that normally in this area, we'd see a lot of neighbors come out if there was something that they were strongly opposed to, and I see one support on this. And so it just, if, if this does get approved tonight, it'd be nice to be, see a six-month review on the application, in my opinion. So that would be Commissioner, Vice Chair Quinn.
Thank you. Well, I'm, you know, after seeing what happened down Paradise Road between Sahara and St. Louis Avenue, I believe we put in separations from similar, similar, similar uses for a reason. And being that there's only 140 square, 140 square feet in between the two, I will not be supporting this tonight. I think it's starting to saturate the corridor.
Are you sure?
I don't, I don't think she is.
Okay, so the, the waiver is just from, just for some clarity, the waiver is just from the residential property, but it's a hotel that's the residential property. Is that correct?
Through you, Chairman, that's accurate. So just to clarify, there is no existing similar use within the radius. That's actually the next item.
Okay.
And the residentially-zoned property for this particular item is being operated as motel, so there's actually no residences within the radius.
I got you. Okay, thanks for the clarity.
I'm happy to make a motion unless anybody has any other further comments.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion for item number 191, SUP 75306. Motion is for denial.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So, to be clear, they have denied, the planning commission has denied it. If you would like to continue on, you will need to appeal to the city clerk within ten days so that city council can hear your request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number one ninety-two, SUP seven-five-three-one-one, applicant Kang Chen Yin for owner Downtown Carson LLC, for possible action, request for a special use permit for proposed seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-square-foot massage establishment, with the waivers to allow a three-hundred-and-sixty-four-foot distance separation from a residentially-zoned property where four-hundred-feet is required, and three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-foot distance separation from a similar use where a thousand feet is required, at one-twenty-four South Sixth Street, Number seventy, Ward three. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I just want to state that this was a building that I reconstructed years ago, and I have an ongoing business relationship with Downtown Project, which still owns this property, so, or one of their entities owns it, so I will be abstaining on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for the disclosure. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is located in the Downtown Las Vegas Overlay Fremont East District. The proposed massage establishment will operate out of a seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-square-foot suite. The proposed massage establishment does not align with the overall vision of the Fremont Street, or Fremont East District. Additionally, due to the proposed distance separation waiver, staff has concluded that the proposed site is not appropriate for massage establishment use, and recommends denial of the special use permit. Please note that additional letters of support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here tonight? We do not see the applicant. Okay. We can still vote, right?
Yeah.
Okay. This was noted as a public hearing, we're gonna hear it. Noted as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item. See no one, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission. I will say, you know, that this is a newly-improved building, the similar use, I believe, is the El Cortez, if the staff could correct me on that.
Through you, Chairman, yes, the similar use is located at the El Cortez and was previously approved, had a different meeting.
Thank you. And I know this landlord has been a good steward of trying to get great tenants within their space, and wouldn't want to see something that takes the community in downtown sideways. The unfortunate thing is, I don't see the applicant here, which is really disappointing to me. Commissioner Roush?
The difference between this application for me and the last one is, the last one had at least ten massage rooms jammed in there, a couple of bathrooms and a small reception area. This looks like it's just two small, no, actually two larger massage rooms, and then a larger waiting area. I wish the applicant was here, quite frankly, because to me, this seems like a massage therapy, you know, actual facility that is more traditionally typical, what we would rather see if we had this type of application, but we can't ask the questions of the applicant. So unfortunately, I think our choice tonight would either be to obey it or vote on it. I have my misgivings, because without an applicant here, I really don't know what to think about it. Normally, I would say, I couldn't approve something like this, because we worked so hard to try to redevelop our downtown area. We have such a beautiful, redeveloped building here, and not knowing what the character and intention of the applicant is, it's really making a decision in a vacuum right now.
And Commissioner Roush, I'm inclined, would this go to city council if it is denied? Because I'm inclined to follow staff's recommendation, not seeing the applicant here.
Right.
But it seems like there should be a chance between now and city council, if it goes there for them to make the case.
Was this one for final action, do we know?
So this one is final action this evening if it is denied. So they would, if it is denied this evening, it would need to be appealed to the city clerk's office.
Okay.
So Commissioner, or Chairman, you may want to just hold this item for thirty days until this item, as the applicant can be here to tell their story.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to obey this to March twelfth, I believe it is. Yes, motion to obey this to March twelfth, done by the commission. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries. And on one ninety-three, I will be abstaining. My family's in the cannabis business, and we sell to all different dispensaries around the valley. I will turn it over to Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Item number one ninety-three, SUP seven-five-three-one-three, applicant Habahart Las Vegas LLC, owner Twisted Willow Investments LLC, for possible action, request for a special use permit for a proposed two-twenty-two-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot marijuana dispensary use at twenty-four-oh-one West Bonanza Road, Suite B and Q, Ward five. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is an existing commercial development which can accommodate the intensity of the proposed use. The subject site complies with all minimum distance separation requirements set forth by Title nineteen-twelve, and therefore can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding existing land uses located in the shopping center, and future uses as projected by the general plan. As such, staff recommends approval of the proposed use, subject to conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received since publication. Thank you.
At this time, I ask the applicant to please come up and do your presentation, and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Nathan Bouvet of NPB Development, Address forty-four-eight Castle Cove Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-zero-eight. I'm not gonna need the overhead, I'm just gonna go over some brief notes. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owner, Twisted Willow Investments, also on behalf of the applicant Habahart Las Vegas LLC. As the staff report and recommendation indicates, we are requesting a special use permit for proposed twenty-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot marijuana dispensary use with retail and wholesale operations. The existing building was constructed in nineteen-seventy-two. The site includes a variety of existing and proposed improvements, including parking, curbs, gutter, sidewalks, existing utilities and lighting on a two-point-one-nine-acre site. Interior proposed improvements include a display area along with restrooms, storage and utility rooms, employee break rooms, offices, product sales, receiving areas, security and surveillance stations, and a waiting room and lounge being proposed. It's also relevant to note that the Hearst and Popeyes Restaurant are located adjacent to the subject site. The project meets the definition of a marijuana dispensary and a marijuana store per NRS four-fifty-three-A dot one-one-five and NRS four-fifty-three-D dot zero-three-zero respectively. As staff had indicated, the proposed site is not located within one-thousand feet of any school, or within three-hundred feet of any city park, church, places of worship, individual care facilities, community recreational facilities, and so on. The project shall adhere to all applicable building and fire codes, including a public, or, excuse me, including public access being from one point of entry and one point for exit purposes. If you look within the exhibits that were provided by, within the staff report, Key Plan B illustrates the primary main entrance to the facility, which goes directly into the point of sale on sales floor area. The Key Plan D is the primary exit, which exits from the waiting area. Both are on the north side of the main side of the shopping center. As staff had indicated, the subject site meets all parking requirements. Currently, they have a hundred-and-seventy-nine parking spaces, where city requires a hundred-and-forty-seven. Of those hundred-and-seventy-nine parking spaces, five are allocated for handicap purposes. The site was originally chosen after some exhaustive research and discussion between Twisted Willow Investments and also Habahart Las Vegas LLC. Habahart had conducted a customer projection model to accommodate the expected customer traffic, but also to determine existing, but also what would be proposed, or what would be used of the site in the future. This included traffic counts, walking scores, parking, accessibility for major roadways, and population density within a ten-mile radius. As staff had indicated, or what you would find within the staff report, the surrounding uses include C-one and CV to the north, the US ninety-five right away to the south, residential plan development to the east, and C-one to the west. From entitlement and building permit approval and state licensing to the actual launch of the facility, it's gonna take approximately twelve weeks, once we receive all entitlements, permits, and state licensing. Also, something that's important to note, operating hours are still being determined. There's a laundromat that currently exists at the site that operates twenty-four hours a day. The Hearst facility operates twenty-four hours a day, and Popeyes, I believe, operates, correct me if I'm wrong, up until midnight, but I'd have to double-check on that. It's anticipated that approximately thirty to forty part and full-time employees are to be hired, and again, operating anywhere from a twelve-to-twenty-four-hour-per-day, seven-day-a-week schedule. What the applicant and myself had discussed is that the applicant Habahart would like to give preference to employment being offered to residents of the district, but more importantly, giving preference to the city of Las Vegas. I've seen dispensaries and cultivation facilities where they bring a lot of individuals from outside of the city, so we wanted to make that note, that preference will be given to the district and residents of the city of Las Vegas. I know there were some other protests received after this was provided to the planning commission. In a prepared statement, Habahart Las Vegas LLC essentially said, in response to any protest, that they are going to incorporate core values, operational protocols, systems, procedures, and processes in the areas, compliance, safety, and security, product procurement, training, patient and guest engagement, and patient support and education. That would be effective tools to address these concerns. Additionally, something the staff report didn't indicate, there's three pole lights in the existing parking lot currently. The existing buildings, as well as Popeyes and Hearst, all have exterior lighting on the buildings themselves and underneath the canopies, including security cameras that are there as well. So I think that will address a lot of the security issues, or the possibility of crime being increased. If anything, having more of a presence, there's sixteen units, and only three of those are currently not vacant. So I think utilizing this site and creating more of a presence in that area, if there is an increased possibility of crime currently, I think allowing this project to move forward would eliminate a lot of those concerns. That concludes my comments. I'm available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
If you would, would you state your name one more time for me, please?
My name's Nathan Bouvet, B as in boy, OU, V as in Victor, E as in Edward, T as in Tom.
Okay, this is noted as a public hearing. If anybody from the public wishes to speak, please come up to the mic. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. And applicant, you have anything else to add, before I turn it over to the commission?
Not at this time.
All right. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you through you, Vice Chairman. So you said you're gonna be a twenty-four-hour operation?
We're actually open to it. There's existing uses at the site that currently operate twenty-four hours. The applicant has indicated that they would prefer to have operations go twenty-four hours, consistent with other types of uses, but also indicated they'd be open to the planning commission recommendation or condition.
Well, I personally am not open to a twenty-four-hour site. I think it's anything after seven PM till, you know, ten in the next morning. I live probably a half a mile on Rancho to that area, and I know the element that is in that area, and I think that, I think twenty-four hours a day is going to be a big safety concern in general for the entire area. I plan on supporting this operation and this, but I want you to understand that just because we are going to possibly grant a yes vote to the dispensary and the sale of, I know how much space you have here, and I know you might be thinking long-term about a lounge. And just so you know, one hand doesn't feed the other, right? We're just looking at this right here, right now. So with that being said, with the hours of operation being sensible, I will support this item.
Commissioner Roush?
A couple of questions of the applicant through you, Mr. Chairman, temporary chairman. You own or you are leasing that entire twenty-six-thousand-square-foot crescent-shaped retail center? It looks like a center within a center. I'm familiar, very familiar with the site, so Terrible Herbst is on the corner, Dottie's is, I think, in your center that you're proposing the use. Are they leaving? I'm assuming that the leases will all be eliminated.
The proposed square footage is not inclusive of the Dottie's. They're a new facility, they're gonna remain at that location. It is also owned by Twisted Willow's as well. This agreement is a fifty-fifty partnership between Habahart Las Vegas LLC and Twisted Willow Investments. So they are the current owners, but essentially also the applicants, if that...
Yeah, and I haven't looked through my materials to see who is Twisted Willow. Is that Mr. Esti that owns Dottie's, or is it something unrelated to Dottie's? I'm curious.
It's unrelated to the actual ownership. They're under a lease.
Okay.
Dottie's is under lease with Twisted Willow Investments.
And you'll see where I'm going with this in a minute. So my concern is this, when we are approving a dispensary, it's different than a cultivation facility, which is different than a lounge, as Commissioner Quinn just noted. They're all very different, and they take into account different considerations. My personal way of looking at it is, I look at a marijuana dispensary, especially now that we're not dealing with only medical marijuana, we have recreational marijuana as well. It's marijuana for everyone now. I look at a dispensary very much like I look at a video poker lounge, or any other privilege license, right? So you've got Dottie's right next to what you're proposing for a very large marijuana use. And I have no way of knowing what you're doing down the road, or in the future. You're just asking us to approve something that, in three different areas of the justification letter, seems a little contradictory in terms of the size of what you're doing. You're proposing a forty-seven-hundred, four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twelve-square-foot restaurant and lounge, adjacent to a twenty-six-thousand-oh-three-oh-square-foot recreational marijuana dispensary. Then, further down, it talks about it being, I think, twenty-seven-thousand-feet, and in our application, it says twenty-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-feet. Regardless of the conflicting numbers, it's still a very large facility for what you're proposing, and I just have serious concerns. It's like marijuana supercity. And it just strikes me as incongruent for the neighborhood, especially given the easy-on, easy-off access from the ramps to the freeway. It just seems very obvious to me that you're looking for volume in this location. Further in your justification letter, you talk about scaling the operation up to twelve-thousand-nine-hundred customers per day. Almost thirteen-thousand customers per day you're looking to serve in this location. I just, I can't stomach it. It's just not something that I can get behind or approve. So with that said, I just think that it's an incompatible use. I don't think it's appropriate. Maybe there's city employees that want to walk across the street and get something after work, I don't know. It's none of my business, but I am gonna say that I don't think it adds to the neighborhood. It's not accretive to the neighborhood, and I think it's going to be a detraction from what we would really, what I would rather see be developed on that shopping center corner. That particular shopping center has really been blighted for many years. I was hopeful that we'd see a developer come in and do something really nice there. If marijuana money is what it takes, maybe that's, maybe I'm old-fashioned, but that's not what I want to see happen there. I'd like to see something a little bit more harmonious and compatible with the neighborhood, and that's my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I could respond to the square footage, I think I could answer those questions, if you don't mind. Initially, when we submitted the justification letter, we were including the previous restaurant as part of the application package. It's at twenty-three-oh-one West Bonanza Road. At that time, we were asked to make it very clear within the justification letter that that's not gonna be used for a consumption lounge, et cetera, et cetera. What we were also told is, within the justification letter, we're looking to do a restaurant lounge, your typical eat, sit down, have some drinks, dinner, so on and so forth. So staff had indicated that that's not even gonna be part of the application, but that's the mindset that we have moving forward. With that being said, the square footage indicated within the justification letter included the square footage for Dottie's. So the staff report and recommendation does not include the square footage that Dottie's accounts for. So it is the roughly twenty-thousand... So it is the roughly 20,000 square feet, not the 26,000 that's being referenced, because that includes Dottie's.
Through you, Vice Chairman. Isn't it staff, a fact that a marijuana dispensary and a place serving liquor such as this little restaurant with the liquor, isn't there a 300-foot separation from liquor to pot?
Through you, Chairman, there is no distant separation from marijuana dispensaries to any alcohol-related SUP. And in fact, this SUP is only for the dispensary use. It does not include any alcohol-related uses associated with any restaurant or lounge, which was proposed to be entitled at a later date.
Thank you.
Commissioner Toussaint?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at this differently than my fellow commissioners. We are a 24-hour town. People are working nights. My parents were in the casino industry, they worked nights. And I think limiting the hours to daytime hours is not compatible for this kind of business or any kind of business. And my crystal ball is really, really cloudy, so I have no idea what you're going to do in the future. And the only thing that I can deal with right now is what's before us today. So I don't know what you're going to do in the future, but looking at the application today, I believe that staff got it right and you'll have my support tonight. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one more question. What type of security are you going to offer? Because I just know a pod store that one of my friends is very familiar with, not to be confused with me, has been broken into daylight three times, like right through the door. So if you're going to be open for 24 hours a day, could we talk about your security plan?
Right. First and foremost, we would submit a security plan once the entitlements and permits and state licensing is issued, state level. That's one of the requirements that you submit a security plan. Not just are we going to have a station security officer at the actual site, we're also going to propose a patrol that's on-site and then within close proximity of the site. So it won't just be limited to the area, they would, within say, a quarter mile, patrol in the area. But there would be exterior and interior security.
May I ask, are you from Las Vegas? Do you live in this area?
I do.
Okay, because you know that area is, you know, not the safest place at 12 noon, right?
Yeah, I've been there, actually at 12 noon and I've been there later at night taking pictures.
You don't even go get chicken after 5:00, right? I mean, you get it, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Slavio?
Thank you, Vice Chair. First, starting with the disclosure, as I've always disclosed in the past, I have constructed multiple dispensaries, testing facilities and cultivation facilities and production facilities. And in the city, North Las Vegas and County, you know, this, I've always voted on all the applications that's come before us and so I'll be voting on this particular application today. Second disclosure is that I think we worked, our company worked on this project before under a pre-construction contract through the owner. That contract is complete, has been complete for years and it wasn't a medical marijuana dispensary at that point. They were looking at doing something in the medical field. So, Mr. Scott, would you feel comfortable with me voting on this?
You're able to vote, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, so now that we got disclosures out of the way, I think this building is blighted and needs to, needs to be improved. There's a lot of square footage, has the, that little restaurant satellite pad, for lack of better terms, on the same site. You know, I'm with Commissioner Toussaint on not restricting the hours, because it is a 24-hour town. And, you know, if somebody goes in there intoxicated, you're going to have security and they're not going to allow somebody intoxicated to go in and purchase marijuana or cannabis products in the evening or during the daytime. And just having a security presence lighting up that parking lot and fixing up this building, I think would be a great thing. With you building out 20,000 square feet or 26,000 square feet, good luck to you. I think we're about to get to a point where we're hitting, hitting a saturation in the market and I could see possibly down-skeletoning in the future, so. But that's not me. I shouldn't be up here trying to determine your business plan if you need 4,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet. If you think that it's 20, 26,000 square feet and that you're going to have 13,000 customers a day, I don't see 13,000 customers, but good luck to you. So, and stating those items, I can support this application.
Would that anybody have a motion they would like to make?
Sure, Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion, see where it goes on item 193, SUP 75313. Move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Can I entertain another motion?
I'll make a motion. Item number 193, SUP 75313, motion is for denial.
Thank you.
And Mr. Vice Chair, that item will go forward for City Council consideration as part of their agenda on March 6, 2019.
Thank you, Vice Chair DeSavio. Moving on to item number 194, SDR 75332, applicant Chick-fil-A Inc., owner Crossroad Commons Limited LLC, for possible action request for a site development plan review for a retail, for a proposed 9,011 square foot restaurant with drive-through and general retail building with a waiver to not orient the building to the corner where such is required at 1100 South Ford Apache Road, Ward 2. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a site development plan review for proposed restaurant and drive-through and general retail use building, which will replace the existing restaurant building located on the subject site. Title 19 requires proposed buildings on corner lots to be oriented to the corner and to the street in the order to maintain a strong street frontage. As proposed, the applicant requests to set the proposed building back from the minimum setback line separated by a double drive-through lane to accommodate the drive-through. While the proposed restaurant with drive-through and general retail building are appropriate for the subject's site, staff recommends denial of the proposed site development plan review due to the associated waiver to allow the proposed building to not orient to the corner. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you get your name and address, please, for the record?
Good evening. Along with Steph Margarito, my name is Robert Lombardi, P.O. Box 2710571, San Diego 92198. Chair Cherry and the commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. We're here requesting your approval of, of course, our project. We've read the conditions and there's only two that we'd like to discuss. The first one is number three, which addresses the waiver. Specifically speaking, if we can have the overhead, our drive-through lane here, the building is relatively in the same place as the existing Claim Jumper that's there currently. We'll be building the Chick-fil-A restaurant and this retail facility next door. This single lane along the street frontage with Charleston and Ford Apache is not against the code. It allows that in the code to have that there. I think what is not meeting the waiver is this area right here, which is the dual lane, which is against Charleston. The need for the dual lane, in our opinion, we've opened a few restaurants in Nevada and been happy to, that we have a stacking distance here with this dual-order lane of 29 stalls. In addition to that, if it does continue to back up, we'll have an additional capacity of up to 37 stalls. We were able to move the drive, which currently... Currently, the drive aisle off of Charleston comes in, there's an immediate turn into the center, into the area where Claim Jumper is. We've moved that 117 feet south so that we have a longer throat. There are some existing parking that, here we go, there's existing parking here that backs into the aisle, which we have landscaped and done away with. In that case, the stacking lane will not impact either Charleston and since it's over here or Ford Apache. So we believe that we've covered that from a traffic perspective, enough logic here to provide significant reason why this waiver can be approved. The only other thing we did as well is in this particular shopping center, there is no continuity after you come in off of Charleston to actually have an aisleway across. We've created one for traffic movement that makes this a little bit more streamlined. We believe that it would be feasible to build a restaurant this way with enough capacity for drive-through, consistent with our other restaurants that we've experienced in the area. That is condition number three. Regarding condition nine, which states that the RTC would like to have a five-foot by 50-foot bus stop easement behind the sidewalk, it's a little bit difficult for us, because we're planning on retaining that block boulder wall that's over six feet high. And the issue is there's just no room to push that back. Here's a little bit more of a close-up view of the bus stop. We would if we could, but since we are keeping this boulder wall around the perimeter of the property where it currently is, we just can't push it back. So with that, we are asking for your support of the waiver and then the removal of condition number nine. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. This was notice as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Hi. Can you get your name and address for the record, please, if you're for or against, and why?
Eric Orion, 8725 Isola Drive, 89117. Good evening. I am a very concerned neighbor. I live directly behind where this proposed project is, in the notice area, and I respectfully ask that you would deny Chick-fil-A and Crossroads Commons their application. I'm not anti-growth in our neighborhood, I'm not anti-chicken. I am just an enthusiastic supporter of a good plan and planned development. My reasons for opposition stem from, there's a few. One is Chick-fil-A has semi-announced this prior to any approvals by the commission or the planning and the neighborhoods, and that shows a disrespect. In addition, there's insufficient road infrastructure. Nearby intersections cannot handle the dramatic increase in traffic, which we've already discussed in reference to other planning sites that have come up before this evening in meetings and how there's low traffic. And then maybe a drive-through, which would have high traffic. This is that drive-through project. And we currently have a restaurant there, yes, we have retail use, but it's not a drive-through with two lanes. And there's already traffic conditions there that exist. You can go on any of the DOT websites and see that. There's also over 24 other facilities in the notification areas that serve food and beverage. Many have drive-throughs, so there's not a need for this facility. There was letters of opposition and support. Two of the opposition letters I've noticed do not come from individuals that live in the area. They may own property there, but as also the applicant stated, he does not live in the neighborhood either. As a resident and property owner, I am directly affected and I ask you to please help maintain the health of our neighborhood over the desire for this business to come into place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public like to be heard? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and I'll give you a minute for rebuttal.
We note in, as one of the conditions, a traffic impact analysis will need to be addressed to the approval of the public works. There is an existing 14,500 square foot facility that there, that is there now. Ours will be 5,000 plus the retail. So the traffic will be mitigated somewhat by the difference in sizes of uses. We did do a preliminary ITE analysis and noted that the AM peak hour trips will be somewhere between 30 and 61 and the PM peak hour trips will be somewhere between 18 and 37 increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. I will turn it over to the commissioner of discussion. Commissioner Toussaint?
Yeah, I don't know if any of you have been on Ford Apache and Charleston. It's very congested and when I go to the, or tried to go to the Chick-fil-A on Rainbow and Lake Mead, it's been there for what, two months? I still can't get in there because the lines are so long. I mean, this shopping center is already impacted. I mean, there's no parking there. I'm in that shopping center twice a month, have been for the last 20 years. I get my hair done there, I go to Whole Foods over there. I used to go to Sharky's, but they just closed. I'm not very happy about that either. But I just think that this is a, I think if you were in Boca, I think it would be awesome or if you were on the other corner. I just think this is not a good corner for this kind of traffic. I mean, when you go to any Chick-fil-A, the lines are, I mean, it's amazing. I mean, really and truly, I wish I had a business like that, where I had people in line for hours trying to get into my business. But I just think this is the wrong corner for you to be in. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Roush?
I'd like to speak last, so I'm going to listen to my fellow commissioners.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Roush. You're always so respectful of me. I appreciate it. Through you, Chair Cherry. So, you know, Solos Salon over there is where I got my haircut for yours. Well, obviously I change places, but here's the thing. On a normal day, like let's say my appointment's 1 o'clock, there was no parking then with Claim Jumper and whatever else. So the problem is that we, it's not that we wouldn't love you on that corner, it's just absolutely, in my opinion, the wrong corner. But I would be supporting my Commissioner Christina Roush's decision. Thank you.
Commissioner DeSavio?
I just, I just wanted to chime in. I totally support the business, but again, it is, I travel that place, that intersection probably 30, 40 times a day. See, my office is right down the road from there and it's, it is a very, very congested, high-impact corner. And, and that's just with the Claim Jumper. I can, I can only fathom what it would be like putting the same Chick-fil-A that I deal with on Rancho in Sahara. So, I don't know. I'm kind of on the fence on this one. No pun intended with the chicken thing, though.
I will say, obviously, I echo the concerns about parking and traffic without, before you had the detail there that helped to understand a little bit of it. One thing that jumps out at me, though, is the orientation of the drive-through to Charleston. And because of the way the building's orientated, it looks like on the site, that's the way that you want it to work, to throw it out towards Charleston and stack it that way. So it is one thing that I would say I have a little bit of heartburn with as far as, you know, not screening or, or if the building was orientated differently, that it was a different flow. But those are my comments.
Commissioner Roush?
Well, I'm a student of commercial real estate. I have spent 30 years doing commercial real estate. I have sold shopping centers and office buildings and developed them and I currently work for a large commercial real estate company. And I actually don't have a problem with this. I actually think that this is a good use on this corner and I have actually lived in this neighborhood for, well, before this shopping center was developed, before anything on any of these corners was developed, and probably north of 25 years. Where I'm going with this is, oh, by the way, I did want to make a observation, two things. One, Mr. Lombardi reached out to me, I did not return your call. I'm not taking meetings with individual applicants to be fair to everyone, because my job's very demanding these days and I don't have time for that. So I do apologize, but I felt like I understood the application well enough or if I had a question, I would have, or I will ask you tonight. On the site plan that we were given, we have a supplemental site plan that was provided. You are on the corner, in fact, correct? Because in the materials that were originally submitted to us, it's showing the proposed restaurant mid-block within the shopping center. And I know that that's not the correct proposed location, right? So our backup material, I think, is wrong. So if any of you are looking at the screen, they're actually on the hard corner, correct?
We are, that is correct.
You're on the hard corner?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't think there was a pad proposed to you in mid-block that was not available to you, right?
No, this was the only one.
I don't have a problem for this stacking plan or the parking plan. I go to the Chick-fil-A at Rancho in Sahara probably once a week. When it first opened, it was a nightmare, it was an absolute disaster. People were flipping each other off and running around the parking lot, screaming at each other, trying to get into the double drive-through lane...
That's correct. The stacking, though, to address that and the traffic concern, Rancho had 21 stacking stalls. We ended up adding another 13 to those. If you went out there recently, you'll see that we added additional. So we're over 34. We've designed this to accommodate the traffic that we think will be at the site.
Yeah, I was at the Rancho store day before yesterday, and it was quite efficient. So I was, I was satisfied with the flow there. I'm respectful of Commissioner Toussaint's comments. That is a brand-new store. How long has that been open? Two months?
Two months, and you still can't get in there.
Right. But, so what happens, and I was laughing with her about this before the meeting, you know, it's like Krispy Kreme donuts, you know, at first you couldn't get in there, you know, 24/7, they're lined up around the block, and that's, that's how it is in Las Vegas. You get it, Something New, In-N-Out Burger, it was the same way when it first came to town. You, you couldn't get through the drive-through. So I think, I see this as a cyclical thing. I see that the neighbors have concerns. I'm respectful of my neighbors' concerns, always. I always want to hear what the neighborhood has to say. I, I didn't have anybody reach out to me. We did have a smattering of postcards in favor and not in favor. And this, this is a little bit of a tricky design. And the, the boulders on the side, we like that in Summerlin. You know, that's part of the whole Picoli Ranch design. That's, those are actually Colici boulders. We, we either jackhammer or bulldo, or dynamite those, and then bulldoze them out, and then stack them. It's, it's a thing here. We like it. We think it's kinda cool. So I don't know what staff's feeling is on that bus stop. I, I'm not sure. Can you explain to me why we need to widen the bus stop access there? You, I think staff was asking, Lucian, were you asking to have a bigger turnout lane for the bus there, given the opportunity? Is that something needed, or?
No, through, through the chair, to Commissioner Roush. What is, it's an easement request. So the RTC emailed the city and asked if they could have an easement for a future bus stop. It doesn't require them to construct a bus shelter. I think, according to the RTC, this is a high-volume, you know, highly-used bus stop, and so they're looking to expand in the future.
I see.
It wouldn't require the applicant to do anything, but it would allow, if they granted the easement, for the RTC to come in, move the block wall enough to make the bigger shelter. So that's what it would do.
Okay, okay. We like that wall, by the way, in Summerlin. That's, that's our thing. And so I guess we'll have to deal with that at a future date, because I, you know, I'm with you on that. I like that, that block wall, that boulder wall. My Commissioners would very much like it if I would make a motion, and I'm almost ready to. I just want to make sure that I've been very thoughtful in this process, because this is an important neighborhood to me. This is a landmark, excuse me, it's a, it's a high-visibility landmark intersection. The shopping center, immediately kitty-corner from this, just went through a major renovation, and it is wildly popular now. You want to find a parking spot, go over there. You'll never get one. I came over here where Claim Jumper was. I went to Sharkies on Saturday thinking I could eat, didn't know it was closed. There's a million parking spaces available now. Go back to Solas, get your hair done. You can park. There, there's plenty of parking. So anyways, that said, I'll be making a motion for approval of this item, unless any of my Commissioners have any other comments that they'd like to make.
We trust you explicitly with this motion.
With that said, I'd like to make a motion for approval, item 194, SDR 75332.
It's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
Was there a deleted condition, or did I hear that wrong?
She's, I believe she says she's gonna deal with that at a later date. Right now, that's a Public Works request, so.
That motion carries. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action tonight, unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 195, SDR 75333, applicant-owner NSA Property Holdings, LLC, for possible action request for a site development plan review for a proposed 302, 39,400 square-foot mini-storage facility with a waiver to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the west, south, and east property lines, where eight feet is required, and 10-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the north property line, where 15 feet is required, at 3301 Mead Avenue, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject's site is located in the southeast sector of the general plan, with a land use designation of LIR for Light Industry Research. It has a zoning designation of M for industrial, which allows a mini-storage facility as a conditional land use. The subject's site was previously developed as a mini-storage facility per approved plot plan review and special use permit U 003488. However, the subject's site is currently under development, as the previous structure has been demolished per an approved building permit. The applicant has proposed to develop the subject's site with a new mini-storage facility, including 59 recreational vehicle parking spaces. The submitted building elevations indicate the building will be 28 feet in height, with red and beige congruent steel and CMU building facades. As the subject's site was previously developed as a mini-storage facility, staff has determined that the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding development in the area. Furthermore, staff believes that the requested waivers to allow reduced landscaping along the west, south, and east perimeter will have minimal negative impact to the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this project. Subject to conditions, please note that additional letters of protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes.
Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Absolutely. My name is Michael Pansero, address 7485 West Azure Drive. I'm here representing the applicant NSA Property Holdings.
Thank you, Michael. Would you like to tell us about the project?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Would you like to tell us about the project?
Absolutely. So my client owns, as you can see here, not only this site here on Mead, but they own this site here, which is funds on Sirius.
Could you push that up a little bit to where the boxes are?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
So, there you go. So they own both of these parcels. Initially, there was a two-story building that was there already, but when they purchased it, it was in a very dilapidated state of being, so they've gone, torn it down, and they're planning on putting a brand-new building there. Right now, their occupancy is like 98 percent. They've, they have a definite need for it, and the waiver we're requesting is for the landscaping, similar to what we had before. There is no landscaping on the two interior property lines. One of the reasons is, by putting that landscaping in, we would just create, you know, an area for, you know, vagrancy, or homeless, or, you know, nefarious activities.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, that's it, I think.
Okay, thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to our Commissioner for discussion. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. This is the perfect location for this application. Your landscape buffers on the west, and where eight feet is required, and, and you know, you're, you're, you're doing everything right here. I'm gonna add a condition to it, and this is very serious, because otherwise, they're gonna take it down and fine you. So I'm going to, does anybody else want to talk about this?
No, no, Commissioner Quinn.
Oh, sorry.
You are a great steward.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a, a motion for approval of SDR 75333, adding the condition, no razor wire, not one piece.
I don't think that would be a problem.
I'm not joking, because they will take it down, and I-
I believe there's just someone in the neighborhood, but not our parcel, but duly noted, we'll make sure that happens.
Okay, so, just so you know, we're gonna, Mary McElhone's gonna keep an eye on that. Okay, so with that, my motion is for approval.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I just want to be clear, so the Clerk's record. So while we've taken that, it is an advisory, since razor wire is not a part of this application, a condition to say no razor wire, since it can only be approved if it was actually listed, is, is unnecessary. So just for the Clerk's record, there's no new condition with that.
Okay, but Commissioner's looking out, so.
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their meeting on March 6, 2019.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 197, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to the matters within jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion of any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker's allowed may be limited. Anyone from the public want to be heard? No? Okay, we will close the public participation, and meeting is adjourned.